Take a look at this.
It's an R, I guess. Please, President. No, no, we're being attacked.
Call the meeting to order. We'll stand for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready? Roll call.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Special order of business, communication, remote participation. Members of the public may view the meeting via LTC and those wishing to speak regarding specific agenda items may register to speak in advance of the meeting. We don't need a motion on that, right? And then we have, I need a motion to approve the special and regular minutes of the Lowell School Committee meeting on January 6th, 2021 and place them on file by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The permission to enter in your packet, I want to bring to the committee's attention the last two items within your packet. You will see an item for the Stocklosa School as well as an item for translation services. Those are the same items that are also listed within your budget transfer. So just two different mechanisms that both have to be applied by the committee. This just happens to be the order that they are aligned within the agenda. There's not an opportunity to put them side by side unless that be the wish of the committee for, by virtue of the vote. However, I want to make sure you have that to your attention. Those are the same items, they're not separate items, just two different mechanisms of transfer and approval of permission to enter. The recommendations approval as written, staff is available for any questions.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I did have a couple of questions on the final entry, the base state interpreters. That's an existing line item in our budget, correct? What did we put in there this year?
This year was 50,000. If you recall, Ms. Martin, we had this, a very similar conversation at the beginning of last year about that number being significantly lower than comparable sized districts for translation. We carried over the 50,000 because we didn't see it being expended, even though the committee did provide last year greater authority, we didn't see it expended. This year, we're seeing schools and school communities utilizing translation services at the level that we would have expected in a sized district such as ours, but significantly beyond what has historically been appropriated by the committee.
So I'm correct then in this, so it'll be basically 300,000. We're anticipating spending an additional 250,000 between now and the end of June?
This brings the entirety of the appropriation up to 250,000. Is that correct, Ms. Phillips?
Yes, that's our projection.
Total 250, not an additional 250. Ms. Phillips?
I believe it is additional 250.
Okay, so total of 300,000. Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
So in terms of how we're using the service, I guess I'm just curious. I mean, for $300,000, we could hire interpreters who would be at our beck and call all the time. So I'm just trying to understand how we're using these in such a dramatically different way, considering the investments we've made in staff who do have translation ability. I mean, that's one of the key, it's been part of their job description.
Yeah. The first response, then I'm going to yield to Ms. Desmond who can share a little bit about the significant portion of this is for IEP services and IEP meetings with just the sheer volume of children that are being serviced. We currently have 69 different languages spoken within the district. So the number of languages spoken within, it wouldn't be efficient to hire staff for all of those languages served. Ms. Desmond, can you share a bit about the number of children served with the IEP meetings and the efficiency of translation services versus staff?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd. So in the past, you may recall the 2018-19 Coordinated Program Review, we had an area that needed to be addressed, which was providing written and oral translation for all of our students at IEP meetings, at annual reviews, and to provide all the documentation translated in a language that they request. So we are using base state translators for that purpose. We had in the past utilized a combination of staff in-house, but it is really important for the staff to have qualifications where they can translate educational language really clearly. And so we can't necessarily just use someone who's able to translate, we have to ensure that they're able to translate with the conversation of the meeting, right? And then also, we used other resources. So we had used, I think you may remember, we used Catholic charities in the past. And so we're going to continue moving forward with base state for all of those services. They are able to provide translation in all of our languages. And also, we are seeing a greater need since the beginning of the year because we did have a lot of meetings that we had to take care of from the closure in the spring. So we had to take care of a lot, we had to, you know, hold a lot of meetings and initials and also reevaluations. And I shared some of that information in the more recent special ed reports as far as the number of meetings that we've had to hold. And so that may be why we're seeing a larger number here for the translations for this year.
What would we say are the kind of low occurring languages? I mean, I think we all know what the high occurring ones, Spanish, Comai, Portuguese, like I mean, 69, that's a lot, but the bulk of them would be the kind of easily recognizable ones.
So it's a mix. There is Arabic, maybe one of them. There are some African dialects like Swahili. There's a mix. So, you know, again, you know, the Department of Ed regulations are that we translate not only orally, but all of the written documentation as well. So again, this organization is able to support us in many languages, and so that's why we're staying with one organization.
I mean, I'm familiar with them, we use them, you know, so I absolutely recognize the need that we need to be able to have access like that for our parents and families. It just seems like that is a huge jump from $50,000 a year to $300,000 a year. And that, you know, when the bulk of our, you know, I mean, that's why they're the most frequently occurring languages, I mean, we know what they are. If we were looking at those as just an in-house resource, we could, we could, you know, bring online that we'd have access to 24/7, I mean, it seems like that would be a more effective use of the dollars. And I can recognize that in this current, you know, I mean, the horse is out of the barn, it's January. So, and it sounds like we spent a lot of this money already at the beginning, so we're maybe just catching up with the amount. But I do think it's something for the administration to consider for the next year's budget, because I do think that we could save some significant money and be able to have the resource for those low frequency languages provided by this kind of a service, but have the more, you know, the larger, the larger portion of these provided by perhaps in-house expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Mr. Hoey?
Thank you. Took me a couple of hours working on this, and the first person I called was Dominic Lay, because he's the one that basically started us worrying about interpreters. And when you tell me we have 69 different languages when Ms. Martin was talking about that, I know that's extra work, but it would be nice to know the whole 69, just to know it. And it might be hard for you to do, but I look at Malden, I believe they have around 80, 83 different languages. I know I've seen that. Boston, where you come from, do you have a number there? How many languages there?
Over 100 in Boston.
Over 100. And I said to Dominic, what do you think about this, my vote tonight? Look at the pressure you're putting me on, to vote for something, for $250,000. And I made a few phone calls, and he was the main phone call, because this is a day that was hot. And he said to me, I believe it's something that's going to improve your system as much as anything else. He said, he already felt that a lot of people just don't understand what we're talking about. We send them, we send them some literature sometimes, and it's not even spelt right. So I'm hoping, I know how I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for this. And it wasn't an easy vote for me, because I'm old school, and I would have said a lot of negative things 25 years ago about a price like this, but in a city that's like Lowell now, I'm voting for it. So I just wanted you to know. Thanks for that extra time.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions on the permission to enter? Okay, roll call? Oh, yeah. So, motion to accept the permission to enter by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call?
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six shears, one absent, approved.
Next, we have memorials. We have one memorial tonight. We'll dock in the chambers for Mr. John Normandy, retired Pine Art School Senior Custodian.
I'll get that going.
Thank you. Next, we have subcommittees. Equity and Access Subcommittee report of the meeting on Wednesday the 13th by Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, the Equity and Access Subcommittee meeting met Wednesday, January 13th. Present were myself as chair and Subcommittee members Hillary Clark and Robert Hoey. Other school committee members present included Mayor Leahy, Andy Dakota, Mike Dillon, and Connie Martin. And from the school department, we had Ms. Phillips, the Chief Equity and Engagement Officer, as well as Dr. Duda, Coordinator of Family Resource Center. So this was the first in a series of meetings the Subcommittee is going to have as the school department looks at our current school assignment policies and zoning and how we might be able to get closer to neighborhood schools or kids going to schools that are closest to their homes while also maintaining equity and diversity in each of our schools. So at last Wednesday's meeting, we looked at the school assignment policy and data, specifically around changes we had made to the current kindergarten class due to limitations on transportation because of COVID and other areas like that. So we did look at some data around how students are currently dispersed throughout the city and as well as the current school assignment policy, the temporary one that was in place just for this current school year. And as we look at the data, we're going to continue to, you know, balance out our values around the voluntary desegregation plan and the individual racial balances at schools as well as the economic status of many of our students, which that information might be harder to get to. And as it relates to students who are identified as being homeless and they fall into McKinney-Vento Services, so as I said, this is the first in a series of gathering that information, and we as a committee as a whole will be looking at the data and the recommendations coming from the school department further. So that's just kind of a brief synopsis of the areas that we covered, and I would present that as a report of progress.
Thank you. There was a motion also for the Subcommittee to receive more data, transportation information as well, and have Transportation Director be present at the next meeting.
Yes, seconded by Ms. Clark, and we all approved on that.
Yeah, it was all, okay. All right. Do we need to vote on that thing? All right. So just need a motion, any questions on the Subcommittee? Just need a motion to accept it as a report of progress by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Reports of Superintendent, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first report, Dr. Hall will take us through your standard update on COVID-19 as we track towards the committee's goals of February 1, March 1, April 1, in terms of our phased return to in-person learning. The second report is going to be a standing report for you as well with the budget update. Mr. Dr. Hall, can you start with the COVID-19 update? There you go.
So we've tried to make a few approvals of the slides.
Just your microphone?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We've increased this presentation a little to respond to requests by the committee for various columns, and we have some additional information on pool testing and what's to come on vaccines that we know within the presentation this week. But as you can see, we have last week's numbers. It was 88 for average daily incident rate per 100,000 and percent positivity rate of 10.42, which represented increases over the previous week slightly. In the next slide, you have information on what's been reported to Desi in regards to positives and quarantines. And this column has sparked some discussion since it's been put up, but basically the point that I was, that Ms. Busty had asked me to explain, which she got questions about it, was when we have 25% in-person or 3% in-person, that doesn't actually mean that exact number per school, that means the level of children in the school when we are operating under that title, so to speak. So what we were aiming for under the MOA was up to 25% in the whole district. That could mean that some schools had more and some had less, but we were under 25%. But I just wanted to stress that for the public. I know the committee knows this, but it doesn't mean exactly you should have that number in that column. But as Mr. Dakota had requested a few weeks ago, we have the number of people that were in the building at the various levels. The math doesn't obviously directly correlate when positives or quarantines occurred, because it would be difficult to quantify that in such a visual. Here's some more schools. So we've been working on, per the committee's direction, on analyzing how we can get more testing within the buildings to ease bringing more and more people back. We're still studying or discussing the Abbott-Binax Now antigen test, but what looks more promising is the state's launching pooled testing, which we explained in the community forums we had last week. But basically, groups of 10 to 12 will be tested at a time, which will allow more people to be tested and increase the time of feedback. And if one person in that group of a dozen tests positive, all will be treated as positive until they further get a screening test to isolate them. But the state believes that this will allow much larger segments of people to be tested, and we're participating in a webinar with districts on Friday where we're supposed to get cost numbers and amounts of people that can be tested and timing. And I'll report that out once we get done participating in that webinar. We put together a website that has all up-to-date information on COVID stuff related to the district. So if committee members or the public want to see that on a daily basis, you just click on this link, and it's updated on a weekly, if not daily, basis regards to this data, protocols and guidelines, where you could get tested in any vaccine information that we may have. I did want to stress too, that you all probably saw that the flu vaccine is no longer required if anyone in the public has not seen that, that was announced by the state. So the school committee voted at a joint meeting with the Board of Health on these following dates. I believe we are on course to meet those dates, subject to the committee's guidance. There is a meeting scheduled with the Board of Health at 6:30 on Monday to discuss the numbers that come out on Thursday and the data over the last few weeks since December when the committee last met with the Board of Health. So again, that joint meeting with the Board of Health is 6:30 on Monday, where the data and reopenings will be discussed. So tentatively, and it looks like we're on course, we would return to that 3% level on February 1st, whatever one school was at that 3% level. And then on March 1st would be the 25% level. And then April 1st is for an extension beyond that, subject to the committee's review of that with the Board of Health. But that decision will be expected to be finally made by the committee on Monday, whatever the majority feels is appropriate, considering all the numbers. Yes, Mr. Dillon?
A quick question, is it going to be on a Zoom meeting or in person?
Yes.
We were thinking Zoom, right?
It's going to be a Zoom meeting, so that link will be posted with the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry about that. I'm putting it back on the slide that we just talked about with the dates. We don't have much information now than what's been reported by the news, but we're, there's three phases of vaccines. The second phase for educators is supposed to begin on February 1st. We're getting more and more detailed information from the state with, but we don't have exact time periods of when Lowell school personnel will be vaccinated. However, some of our nurses have received the vaccination. As you can see in Phase 2 on this slide, it involves those with underlying health problems, people over the age of 65, and essential workers like grocery store employees and teachers. Everyone else not in that category is expected to be in April. So these are the next steps that the committee laid out in its meeting in late December on what we want to be focused on, to increase our chances of meeting those dates and reducing risks. And we continue to monitor these and look at options for the committee's consideration in the future. That's all I have, subject to any questions, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the committee members? Mr. Hoey?
Thank you. I have just a few things that have been bothering me. One, if we look at the second page and you go back to the date of 12/24/20, that's when the first week it had a, it fell from the week before, and then 12/31/20, it dropped again to 10.80, and then it dropped again on 1/7/21. So that was three weeks, all moving in the right direction. Then we get this one.
all will be treated as positive until they further get a screening test to isolate them. But the state believes that this will allow much larger segments of people to be tested, and we're participating in a webinar with districts on Friday where we're supposed to get cost numbers and amounts of people that can be tested and timing. And I'll report that out once we get done participating in that webinar. We put together a website that has all up-to-date information on COVID stuff related to the district. So if committee members or the public want to see that on a daily basis, you just click on this link, and it's updated on a weekly, if not daily, basis regards to this data, protocols and guidelines, where you could get tested in any vaccine information that we may have. I did want to stress, too, that you all probably saw that the flu vaccine is no longer required if anyone in the public has not seen that. That was announced by the state. So the school committee voted at a joint meeting with the Board of Health on these following dates. I believe we are on course to meet those dates, subject to the committee's guidance. There is a meeting scheduled with the Board of Health at six-thirty on Monday to discuss the numbers that come out on Thursday and the data over the last few weeks since December, when the committee last met with the Board of Health. So again, that joint meeting with the Board of Health is six-thirty on Monday, where the data and reopenings will be discussed. So tentatively, and it looks like we're on course, we would return to that three percent level on February 1st, whatever one school was at that three percent level. And then on March 1st would be the twenty-five percent level. And then April 1st is for an extension beyond that, subject to the committee's review of that with the Board of Health. But that decision will be expected to be finally made by the committee on Monday, whatever the majority feels is appropriate, considering all the numbers. Yes, Mr. Scott?
A quick question. Is it going to be on a Zoom meeting or in person?
Yes.
We were thinking Zoom, right?
It's going to be a Zoom meeting, so that link will be posted with the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry about that. I'm putting it back on the slide that we just talked about with the dates. We don't have much information now than what's been reported by the news, but we're, there's three phases of vaccines. The second phase for educators is supposed to begin on February 1st. We're getting more and more detailed information from the state with, but we, we don't have exact time periods of when low school personnel will be vaccinated. However, some of our nurses have received the vaccination. As you can see in Phase Two on this slide, it involves those with underlying health problems, people over the age of sixty-five, and essential workers like grocery store employees and teachers. Everyone else not in that category is expected to be in April. So these are the next steps that the committee laid out in its meeting in late December on what we want to be focused on to increase our chances of meeting those dates and reducing risks. And we continue to monitor these and look at options for the committee's consideration in the future. That's all I have, subject to any questions, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the committee members? Mr. Howie?
Thank you. I have just a few things that have been bothering me. One, if we look at the second page, and you go back to the date of twelve twenty-four twenty, that's when the first week it had a, it fell from the week before. And then twelve thirty-one twenty, it dropped again to ten point eight zero. And then it dropped again on one seven twenty-one. So that was three weeks all moving in the right direction. Then we get this one that went up a little bit. But I thought, once we had three good ones, we were going to move to get that three percent, and that's just the way I took it. But now that we had on one fourteen twenty-one, something like it went up to ten point four-two, I think right now it just makes sense to, I like what you said, I heard, February 1st, that date we shot at, I hope it stays there for that three percent because to me, I felt they were safer in school, just as safe as at home. And those children need a lot of special attention. So, Mr. Superintendent, if you don't mind me putting it on you right now, do you think the February 1st date is going to be the date for that three percent?
We're on track, Committee Member Howie. Tomorrow comes another data release. As you can see, and I think as you look, thank you, Dr. Hall has it up on the screen for the public. When we made the determination of moving the three percent out, you look back at the twelve seventeen and twelve twenty-four numbers, we're significantly below that. And the committee has directed that we see a three-week trend. We're seeing a downward trend. Now, what Thursday tells us, however, with the incremental uptick of last week will be important. It'll be informative.
That's tomorrow?
That's tomorrow. We see that, we see that data each Thursday from the state. So we'll see what that data looks like tomorrow. But if, if you're asking me right now, the message I've given the community is we're on track for that February 1st, but the committee has said we're going to continue to monitor data, and your next check-in with the Board of Health is Monday. So as of today's day and time, as we sit here right now, we're on track for February 1 for the three percent. New data tomorrow, so for the community, the state puts that data out each Thursday. I'll send a letter out to the community with information about Monday's meeting with the Board of Health, and I'm looking forward to what the Board of Health shares on Monday.
Okay, one last thing, Mayor. I did make a phone call to my colleague, Mike, Mike Dillon. I think he would have had some comments for tonight, too, but he had a concussion that he can't really do anything right now, but he's okay. But he can't do anything as far as work or leave the house and stuff, so he's fathering his kids right now. But he would have had some comments, too, and I just wanted to say he's okay. He told me he's okay. He'll be here soon.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Do we, I mean, when we say, we've got to let the public know, I would think by the end of this week, right? So does the committee feel like we're now?
Well, I think the plan is that we have that special meeting with the Board of Health on Monday, correct?
Yeah.
So that we have to make the decision at that point.
I would just ask one question. Are they going to determine for us if we're?
No, it's a, it's a conversation, like the, like all of our other conversations have been. And then if we, my concern would be that we make it a special meeting as opposed to like a subcommittee or something, because then we can actually take action on Monday and fully vote and then be able to move forward.
All right. So that, well, why don't we do that? Any questions on that?
No, but I have one more.
Sure, Ms. Howie.
Well, another concern I have is about the vaccine, you know? I mean, you're going to vaccinate your teachers. And to me, I'm hearing a lot of people that aren't going to take the vaccine. And I hate to be a bearer of bad news, but I'm hearing people that are going to say, I want to wait, I want to wait. And that's a little bit of a concern for me with our staff, if we have a high percentage that don't want to take the vaccine. So I think it's something else we just have to keep in mind, that's all.
That's a personal decision, and, but, you know, if, if we open the schools back up, it's your choice to get vaccinated or not, so. All right. So we're all set with this report? Thank you. Next report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's the committee's job. I hate to say it. It's going to get harder before it gets easier. So while we're also working on the reopening in COVID-19, we're going to be adding another standing report for you, which is your budget update. You're getting into the season now, where we're also going to be planning for next year. We're expecting the governor's budget proposal to come, to come shortly. So you're going to see this budget update as another standing update on your reports from the superintendent. If we can change over KC to the, the screen. Ms. Turner is remote today. She's going to be joining us remotely. However, as soon as KC gets the screen set up, and our update today includes also the committee's request for an update on bills as they pertain to Chapter Forty-four, Section Sixty-four, which are obligations from the prior fiscal year. There's a, Ms. Turner will also share with you a full update. You have the hard copy in your packet, and let's see if we can make this work. She's going to have to share that from her screen in order to show her face at the same time, correct? You got it set up? Yeah, she's going to need to be able to, she's going to need to be able to share, KC. I don't know that this, you're going to share it from there? All right.
Can you hear me now?
We, we have you, Ms. Turner. Thank you.
But I can't share my screen, and I need to be able to share my screen to progress through the presentation.
There's a, KC, are you able to make that adjustment for her? She's, you see that you're the host now? Can we change her out to the big screen for the committee?
All right, I think I got it. Can you see this?
No. KC, can you change her to the enlarged screen? I think if you just put her in the, just eliminate the other.
Can you see me moving through the presentation?
Yeah, Billy Joe, but you're only in a very small box for the community and for the committee, so.
But the presentation is big, though, right?
No.
Oh.
It looks big on your side. On our side, it looks very small.
Can we change the screen as she talks?
That's what I thought. We were going to have, it should show up, should show up just like when you see the public speakers. And she should have control of the, the screen. We can, I guess, if we have to, if we have to flip to that.
What's on your screen?
On my screen is the presentation.
Who's got, we got the mouse right there.
All right, Billy Joe, you're up.
Do you just want me to move ahead without seeing it?
Can you change the screens, Billy Joe?
Can you see, when I, I'm changing it right now. Can you see that?
Yeah, no, we can't.
What did they say?
You're going to, Billy Joe, you'll make sure you reference which slide number you're on.
Okay, I'll do that. Can, can you hear me loud?
You're, you're loud. Loud and clear.
Okay, okay, great. So the, um, the first, the second slide is just the agenda showing that we're going to talk about what FY, I'm twenty-two possibilities are. I'm sorry? Did you say something?
Oh, yeah, you're all set. Go ahead.
Okay, so the agenda is just talking about how we're going to discuss FY twenty-two possibilities for current fiscal health, MGL forty-four, Section Sixty-four, which is regarding bad bills and explains some stuff that we've we've been facing, some pandemic delays and the steps that we've taken lately. Slide three is an excerpt from the Georgetown University's consultants who did an estimate on what the FY twenty-two possibilities look like. In the state of Massachusetts, it looks like we're going to get eight hundred and fourteen million dollars, which we're looking at approximately twenty million of that. So twenty, twenty million, twenty point seven million dollars if the FY twenty-two possibilities come through. They're saying it's approximately three point seven percent of what our Title I dollars are currently. So that looks good if we do get that. If they break it, they also broke it down in the presentation and showed that of the fifty-four billion that ESAR just did with their part, you know, their second federal COVID relief package, fifty-four billion of it went to ESAR for us directly, one thousand per pupil. Then there was government emergency educational relief, which is on the right-hand side, and that's a couple of million dollars. They also gave ten billion dollars for childcare and three point two billion for emergency broadband, broadband usage. So we'll, we'll have to, you know, participate in that, too. We can apply for that to help our students that are having a difficult time getting into the broadband systems that we're currently using. Slide five is talking about the fiscal health and how it's been improved. I know I've said this in other slides, but I think it's important to just bring it back to your attention so that you are aware that we are doing well right now. Due to the accurate forecasting and strategic, strategic use of the funds, our fiscal health has improved substantially. FY nineteen twenty, we had the savings of over eight million dollars, which we strategically used to avoid losing funds that should be used for students, including the first-time-ever investment in a one-to-one device initiative. FY twenty twenty-one, the current savings look like they're going to be approximately seven point five million or more, and it will be used to fill areas of needs that will most benefit the students, including continuing to build revolving accounts, investments in digital learning, and lifting the hiring freeze to help with the expansion of in-person learning. Of course, when we go back to school, we're going to need more people to help overcome all of the learning loss. Where we're able with the current FY twenty twenty-one savings to, no, I'm sorry, the revolving account balances have shown a steady increase, which has resulted in us now having to ensure that we don't pass the sale on account balances. The food service repayment was paid back in one point five years rather than four, and two years of pre-purchase and curriculum supplies and technology have occurred. So again, this is repetitive stuff, but I think it's just important with all the negative stuff that we may have to face. It's important to remember the good stuff, too. Slide six is just an excerpt from the MGL forty-four, Section Sixty-four. I highlighted the sections that the superintendent and I found interesting. We did, we did send this to the solicitor to ask her for her interpretation because the law is stating that having unpaid bills, which may be legally unenforceable due to the insufficiency of an appropriation in the fiscal year in which such bills were incurred. We don't have an inefficiency, an inefficiency of an appropriation. We had enough money. At the end of the year, I remember telling you guys that we had zero dollars on the year-to-date budget report. But once the auditor closed all the purchase orders, the money goes back into the account. So had we not closed the purchase orders, the money would have been there, and we would have been able to pay the bills. So we weren't overspent. We didn't overspend our bills. Another section on here says, no bill or payroll shall be approved for payment unless and until certificates have been signed and filed. We've done all that. We've had all the certifications from the vendors and from myself stating that the goods were received. The last section says that we shall not prohibit or prevent obligations of previous fiscal years due to any other town or to, to a district, a city, a county, or the Commonwealth, or for legally incurred debt. We're not supposed to be able to prevent the, prevent it. We're not asking for money. We're not asking them to take the money that was there at June thirtieth, and we're not asking for city money on this end of the year either. We have the funds, and we have the budget codes. Then none of the codes that we have to pay are for unbudgeted items. They're all budgeted items, like special ed, tuition, supplies, things like that. Slide seven is just summarizing what I just said to you about MGL forty-four. It's saying that the law states that we need this vote for unpaid bills that may have been legally unenforceable due to the insufficient, insufficiency of an appropriation. In other words, it would be unenforceable without city council vote if we had overspent our budget. We did not do that. We had spent all of our FY nineteen twenty dollars as of June thirtieth, but ended up with a cash balance of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand after purchase orders were canceled by the city auditor. Thus, there were sufficient funds to pay the thirty-seven thousand dollars in unpaid bills. This is a matter of timing due to the pandemic, not insufficient appropriation. We had also submitted all the certifications from the business office and all the vendors, from the vendors, that the goods and services were received, and we are indeed obligated to pay for goods and services received. Slide eight is telling you what, just summarizing what our unpaid obligations are so that you understand what bad bills are. It's not a bill that we said, let's go spend on this, even though the school committee didn't give us approval. Everything that, all these bad bills that are coming in are things that you approved in the budget. It's just they came in later than they should have. So what are the unpaid obligations? The bills that were received after the close of the city's books from private vendors and purchase orders closed by City Hall before the bill was received. One example is, do you recall when we did the big Chromebook purchase? And the City Hall was able to hold that purchase order open for us because they knew it was coming? So they held the purchase order open for us until it came sometime in September. So in the past, previous auditors would hold these purchase orders open for us, and this is why it seems to be a problem now and where it was not one before. Bills received after the close of city books from other municipalities, schools and districts. Requests from employees after the close of the city's books. Others, which may include an invoice, came in higher than the purchase order. Shipping and fees not included in the purchase order. So if they ordered something for ten dollars and forgot to put the two dollars for shipping, and it went through without anyone catching it, we get a bill for two dollars months later. So they're minimal amounts. And a third one would be service rendered without a purchase order. That's an example that I'm going to talk about later, which is a special ed situation. Slide nine. Are they keeping up with me with the slides?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, good. So the next three slides are just slides of the current package that I had submitted to the city council. I submitted it on October fifteenth to Conner Wald when I emailed it over. We had multiple conversations in between about things that, you know, we thought we could do. So it, once, it was finally finalized when we talked, we had a conversation on December twelfth with Christine O'Connor, Tina Maciallo, the city auditor, and Connor. When we had that talk, we decided that course reimbursement should come off of this because they're not really relevant under a bad bill list. So I revised the final bill request, and I sent it, and that's when it went on to the city council's agenda. These were approved on January twelfth, and they're listing with examples beside each. They're showing how there's like school specialty, WB Mason, AA constable services, bills that we didn't receive until after the fact. The next slide, slide ten, is an example of one thing that I wanted to show you that we can't control. Due to DSS and homeless placement of foster children, one school district may receive students and not know until the residents of the parents have been determined which school district has the share of the cost. So we often get billed for a student that we didn't even know that we had that just because we have to pay for it due to their parents having lived here in their last known address. Thus, this often happens after the fact. So this is an example of when it's called a bad bill because we didn't have a purchase order. How could we have a purchase order when we didn't know the kid existed? So the one example that just happened with the Westford Public Schools is the student was placed and was attending on Westford Public Schools after they determined fiscal placement was in Lowell. Several months after the student received the services, they billed us. Another example is a child was just placed in a homeless shelter when they, but was going to the Tinsborough Public Schools. Tinsborough fought it, and when they fought it and realized that the father lived in Lowell, they wanted us to cosher it, so we got a bill for that child, and that's on the new list. So at the January twelfth meeting with the city councilors, I emphasized that I promise we'll do everything we can to minimize, but I cannot promise that these things will not occur because of the nature of the beast. These things are out of our control. All we can do is, Christine and I met about this a year ago asking what can we do about this because there's nothing I can do. And we've agreed that when special ed gets notice from the Department of, you know, DSS or displacement of homeless students, that they'll alert me right away, and I'll send that same alert to Christine so someone at City Hall is aware that there's going to be a problematic bill coming for. So the next slide, which is slide of twelve, is a continuation of the bad bills that I submitted on the October fifteenth email. It's reimbursement, Zoom reimbursements for employees. A couple of our employees had to pay for Zoom to help us get through the pandemic. They weren't doing it because they wanted to, you know, they had to, they were doing it to be helpful. And so with everything going on, the chaos of the, you know, the whirlwind we were in, they may not have submitted the reimbursements till August because it was nineteen ninety-nine a month. Maybe they were waiting until they had enough bills. But it was, I don't think they should not get paid because it came in in August. The tuition reimbursements for courses, there are twenty-nine employees that are included in those two lines right there. We're still waiting for the city auditor to, auditor to determine if there's a way she can pay them. The collective bargaining language says that we should reimburse the employee and take the credit from the year. take the credit from the year with, in which they were, um, they got the credit, but that means they get a thousand a year. That determines whether they're being charged for the thousand for FY nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one. They should get paid. They've never been penalized in the past. And furthermore, the schools were closed, the principals were not there, the, the buildings were locked. They couldn't get in to scan, get signatures, do, do anything. The universities were closed. They couldn't get through to the universities to get courses. We couldn't get in touch with vendors. So I know they had the same type of problems, so I do think they should get paid. And unfortunately, right now, we're waiting on the city auditor, auditor to try to find a solution. Um, but we have been getting many calls, and they might start to call you. And just know that on the school side, we're all four of them getting paid. We're just waiting for a solution. The next slide is, um, slide thirteen, and this is the one that I was referring to when I talked to the city councilors, um, on the January twelfth. I said that bills had been coming through since I submitted the original package, and those were all problematic. And so instead of putting them on that original list, we had to investigate them because they all had different scenarios, like, um, some of these were DCF placements, like I explained, that came in after the fact. Some of them are being contested because they're charging us for thirty days for a student that we know the student left in December, and the stu, they're charging us for January. We don't want to put that right on the list and do exactly what, we don't, we don't want to be, um, we don't want to look like we're not being diligent here. We're looking at each of these bills and making sure that they're supposed to be paid before we submit them. So, um, like I said, these are some of the examples that we're facing with, um, bad bills now. They're all special ed placements. Um, summer school services happen in June. Their, their billing happens, I called the school, one of the schools, for an example. Their, if their June summer school services happened in the month of June, and the billing cycle ends on the end of a month, if we missed the end of the month on the twenty-seventh, we wouldn't get billed till July twenty-seventh, which after mailing it to us and going through the approval process through SED, we wouldn't get it until August, which by then our purchase orders were closed. So again, there were purchase orders for some of these. Most of them, there were only a couple that didn't have a purchase order, and those were the DCF ones. But all the other ones, I have purchase orders that, um, attached to the original bill that I could show to you guys, that we had them, they just got canceled on us. And not, not just place blame on that because I know that we have to close the books, but unfortunately, with the pandemic, with all the delays, it just became problematic that we couldn't get the bills in, in time. It just didn't work out. It's not bad bills like we overspent on, you know, created new accounts. Um, examples of issues that cause bad bills, I already just, um, talked to you about this. One example is the DCF placing a student, um, that we won't get the bill or the, um, we won't get a bill until after the fact, and there won't be a purchase order. We also have another example, and we have all the email and paper trails on this. So if you ever wanted to do a subcommittee and see this in, you know, in, in person, we could do this. But we call the vendors. When we're closing a grant or we're closing out the year, when there's a purchase order with a remain in balance, we call the vendors to see if there are outstanding invoices before we close the purchase orders. During the pandemic, it was very difficult to reach many vendors. They were not returning our calls. They were not returning emails. We started to do all emails so that we have a paper trail. We have one example of a paper trail that one vendor was stating that they had no additional invoices since COVID interrupted their work. So they admitted in the email that they did not do the work. Now, months later, they're invoicing us despite that earlier message. So the woman is going back and forth with me, and I said before, "I will even submit that bill to the city council. I need proof from someone on our end that the work was done," since they expressly stated in the email that they had not done the work. So this is what, examples of what we're facing when we get these thirty thousand dollar bills. Um, another one is-
Can I just interrupt for one second?
Sure, absolutely.
So on an example like that, you're not paying it.
I don't want it. That's, I, that's exactly what I was saying one time before. Sometimes I'm on the same page when the city council doesn't, we might be on the same page, but we have to do our job and be transparent and bring it to you so that you guys know what, there's a possibility of a lawsuit. And of course, I, so my answer was, "No, absolutely. I didn't want to pay this one." But now, she sent a long email explaining what happened, that the girl that said it was a clerk, and she didn't understand that the work had been done, and that she can verify that two workshops occurred at Lowell Public Schools, which I found hard to believe because we were closed. So I was, I keep on countering her. So I don't believe we should pay it until they prove it.
Okay. And then the next example, you have, um, the vendor with an email that's expressed, uh, not to do the service. That, that would be an example of someone not getting paid either, right? Because it's written to do not perform the services, yet they did it anyways.
Exactly. And that's one of the things that, if we had a subcommittee meeting where I'm able to explain this to you. So if, you know, when you go in front of a city council, the questions are asked, and you have to answer them, but you don't have a chance to say, "Can I show you this email?" Um, so that example right there with the, um, the, you know, the data that shows that the special ed office specifically said, "Do not contact this family until you, um, get the contract." That was in February. The contract didn't come until August, and they backdated the contract for March twenty-eighth. They should have. If they were going to backdate it at all, they should have backdated it to, prior to their services, but they didn't. So my point is, these are all the type of things that we face when we're, when we, when we get bad bills. Sometimes it could be, um, an error on someone's part. Maybe it fell under a desk or something like that, but if that were the case, when we called the vendor for follow-ups and, "Do you have any outstanding invoices?" They would have that chance to tell us at that point that they, um, "Oh, there's an outstanding invoice." But anyway, so, um, the next slide is just, um, sixteen, and it's just showing you what we've done to prevent delayed bills. Last year, we dealt with, um, when I first started, it was when we, the school department was going through turmoil. So I don't know what happened to why they had bad bills from the previous year. But last year, the first year that I got bad bills was from the year where we had no money, and we had, there were no systems in place. And I emphasized to everyone when I started that we have no systems, that everything was in chaos, and we had to build the systems. So when we got that list last year, it was substantially less than the first year, but we got bad bills. And that was because we needed to put controls in place for our employees. This year, it's not a matter of our employees. They're doing great. They've done everything they can to make improvements. Now it's on the vendor side. So what we did last year is we offered training to the twenty-eight school clerks in the district, and we worked with city hall's purchasing department to offer additional training to our people. We send out frequent reminder emails to the school clerks and departments on the importance of entering purchase orders prior to ordering, because we did have a couple of problems in the past where a new school clerk might call in a supply order without having a purchase order that existed. Um, we send out quarterly open purchase order reports to the school clerks and principals so that they can review that in the beginning rather than at the end. This, I motivate them by saying, "If you identify that the purchase order is already filled and there's extra money, if you close it, you get extra money to spend." So I mean, that would benefit them. We also do a year-end review with the schools on open purchase orders to trigger the investigation for missing invoices. We, we also developed a partnership between SED and Finance so that we could track individual students, because here's the dilemma. If one purchase order covers five students and we're getting billed against that purchase order, the billing office has no way of knowing that there's missing invoices. We wouldn't know that until a bad bill shows up five months later. So what we did is we took all the names of the students down to the finance office, too, and we put, uh, twelve columns across where we could say, "Oh, we received the October bill. We received November. We received December, not Nov-" I mean, we missed out on December week, but we got a January bill. That means it's missing." So now we work with SED to figure that out and make sure that we can identify missing students. We, um, also could potentially add a policy on our purchase orders and invoices that let vendors know that if the invoice is not, not submitted in a timely manner, then we just won't pay. But I have to find out from Christine O'Connor if that's legal, but if it is legal, then that might be a nice motivating, um, phrase for the vendors. And then the last thing is, since one problem is bills going to various individuals, because this is a problem. If the bill goes to the school department, I mean, to the school, and there was, there weren't any, um, schools open, and the clerk was at home, and that bill sat on someone's desk, then we had no way of knowing there was an outstanding bill. So if the, if the bills are sent to special ed and go through a process of being, uh, approved, and then it doesn't make it down to our desk in time, that's a problem. So one thing that we were thinking of doing is setting up an accounts payable email address for LPS, and we'll advertise this on invoices and purchase orders, where all problems with the accounts payable, instead of them contacting their contact, which may not even be a finance person, it would come to us at least. There would be a paper trail showing that they tried to contact us, because right now, that's not how it works. Right now, the bills, the special ed bills go to special ed so that they can approve it and say, "Yep, we did have this child, and this child did attend this school." Now we can get the bills and then go up to special ed and say, "Please sign off on this." So we are coming up with ideas, but like I said, in summary, last year was all about improving our, um, our staff. This year, it's about finding ways to deal with the vendors. And that's all. I have so many questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the floor? Mr. Dakota?
Just a quick question. The possibility of changing it from bad bills to late bills? So it doesn't sound like we're really messing up so badly. I think it's, it makes it sound to the public that we just have a whole series of bad bills that we keep submitting year after year. Um, and just, just a question, just a rhetorical question.
It's a great idea. We put it, we actually, if you look at that slide, it says what we've done to prevent delayed bills. The superintendent came up with that idea, too. So we've, I've been trying to rephrase it because it is just a verbiage problem. It's not listed in the MGL forty-four sixty-four. It doesn't say bad bills.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Turner, for this, uh, very detailed, you know, presentation on all the ins and outs of this process. You know, uh, I think even with a perfect system, there are clearly things that are out of the Lowell Public Schools' control. You know, as you mentioned, the summer school bills for June, you know, can't be received before the end of June. They're still providing services, um, obviously late DCF or the placements, the information that we get after the fact. Um, I think what's important here and what I feel like I've heard, um, are the, the process improvements that you've made within our own staff, the things that are within our control, and I think it is important to have those controls in place, you know, for staff. So the training, I think that the, uh, recommendation to, um, create a single AP email address for bill remittance makes a lot of good sense. You know, you're figuring out how to streamline this information, um, and obviously, you're doing a thorough review of all of the bills that have come in. And, um, so I just want to support you, you know, in the work that you're doing, and I believe that, um, that you've really, you know, presented a clear picture of where things stand, including the employee reimbursements. Um, obviously, this year in particular, there were some additional struggles that were also, you know, completely out of everyone's control here. And, um, and I just think that, uh, it is important to present this, but I, but I support you in the work that you're doing with you and your team and the district to reduce the number of delayed bills that are coming in and the money that might cross fiscal years. But I think in many businesses, uh, you know, finance, it's not a perfect system. We can always be working to improve, but there are oftentimes things that cross over from year to year, um, that, that still are, need to be paid. Um, and so thank you for giving us the, the full picture here. It's very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a few quick questions. I do appreciate the time that went into, uh, the report, Ms. Turner. Um, and I, I think, you know, certainly one of the key things in this really is that recognizing that the pandemic had a huge impact on our ability to do business and the ability of our vendors to do business. So I, I absolutely recognize that as, uh, you know, one of the key kind of problems that we were facing. Um, you know, I, I do think it's important to note that, that we're talking history here that goes beyond certainly Ms. Turner's, uh, time here in the district, um, and the, you know, current administration, um, you know, where there were years where we literally had million-dollar bad bills that were presented to the council to be paid, and, uh, it was inappropriate. It was, you know, for services that had been used and we knew had been used, and it was, it was a, you know, uh, the, it was a, a example of the system not working. Um, but it does leave that taste in the mouth, uh, so that the council is particularly aware of bad bills, which I understand, um, and in holding the, the, us, the school department to account for improving those systems, you know, that, that falls on us. It falls on every other depart of, department of the city as well. Um, so taking those things into account, one of the key things I'm, I'm concerned about, and you can tell me, Ms. Turner, if this is kind of pandemic-related. We've gone through all of the items that were approved by the council on January twelfth, correct? So those have been approved, and they will be paid.
Yes.
Okay. So then what you're presenting on page thirteen, I don't know if you can get back there. These are additional ones that have come in since then?
Yes. Yes, as a matter of, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I mean, I understand things happen in June. That's why we have a, a grace period into July for people to submit those bills. Um, but it's the middle of January. That's over, I mean, it's six and a half months since the service was delivered. I don't, I, I'm just, I, I'm just questioning, you know, we went through this whole thing with thirty-one thousand dollars worth of bad bills. Now we're looking at, I'm not going to do the math, uh, so at an additional sixty-four thousand that came in since that first group. So I just don't understand why they're not just late. I mean, these are, I'm going to use the accounting term, super late, um, by six and a half months. So I mean, again, as we're resolving problems, new problems are still coming up in January, and that's, that's what I'm most concerned about.
I agree. I agree one hundred percent. And just so you know, that I, I would say that there are two, and with these particular things, when we were researching these, um, there were two exam, two things that came up. One, the pandemic, because these schools, they were working remote as well. There, there's schools that probably have one clerk that does all their accounts payable stuff. So if they were working remote, they might not have caught it until they do their year-end audit, which their year-end is often different than ours. So in my mind, I feel like would they do an audit and realize that there's unpaid bills? Because if you notice, there's like one, two, there's four of Valley Collaborative, three of Walker, you know, there's multiple for each of these. And that's why we implemented the partnership with SED so we can start tracking by student and know when there's a missing bill. But there's one other problem. When we had a hiring freeze, we had a, a woman of thirty years that did this for us, um, out of district billing. She left in the summer, and because of the hiring freeze and everything going on, there were, you know, it was very difficult to find a replacement for her at that time. So there were a couple of months that they were, her bills, that the bills might have been being sent to her email address for all we know. I know one particular example. They were still emailing Jen McChrystal for bills, and they never reached out to the finance office to say, "Hey, we're sending these bills, and no one's replying." So again, we had no way of knowing that they were missing because no one was calling us. Usually, what happens if there's something that they can't get through to with their contact, they'll start to call the finance office, or they'll call school committee members or city hall to look for, you know, "Why am I not getting paid?" And then that triggers us looking into it. So there, it's, this is just an example of no one looked into it until right now. The day, the bills were dated December twentieth from the special ed office. That means they received it soon before that. So it, it went through the process. We didn't get it until the last week of December. It went in front of you now. So it's just a matter of the pandemic and like maybe that hiring freeze, you know, when we had an employee. Now, we know what we could do differently when there's not a pandemic. When we have someone leaving, we can do an overlap and have, you know, hire someone new before the person leaves so that we don't have that overlap, you know, that potential problem. But in this case, we didn't have the ability to do it. There was a pandemic, so.
Okay. I'm also curious about the, the, one of your recommendations as an option of, um, building into our contracts, the, you know, placing the onus on the vendors to get these bills to us on time or risk not getting paid. Um, is there legal language around that that we could include in our vendor agreements?
I sent an email to, um, Christine, the solicitor, to ask for her opinion on that because if she said yes, then I would feel like, "Let's do it," you know, because I think just the motivation of it would help us, you know, incredibly. So, but, um, no, I don't know of any language. I tried to search. I couldn't find anything for it or against it.
Well, I think, I mean, because the reality is, again, we've got a, we've got a lot of vendors, but there's specific vendors, and we know most of them. I mean, I know that there will always be one-offs of, you know, a, a one school ordering something from a vendor we've never used before, or things like that. But for the most part, I mean, like, you know, looking at all these, uh, special education vendors, looking at, you know, some of the, the curriculum vendors and, and just straight-up office supplies and things like that, these are established relationships we have with, with vendors, and we're a significant part of their business. I mean, you know, as, as a, you know, a significantly sized district, we're spending a significant amount of money with them. Um, and I think that for the most part, we should be able to build into our vendor agreements this kind of understanding, um, so that, you know, again, the onus is on them to ensure that bills are received by us in a timely, in a timely way. Um, so is the next step then, Ms. Turner, that we'll take basically this list on page thirteen, and we now have to, um, with the committee's approval, submit that now to the council to go through this whole thing again?
Yes. Unfortunately, yes.
With the committee's-
With the committee's recommendation of the last meeting and Ms. Martin, I believe your motion, which is responded to within the packet as well, we would actually bring the list to the committee for formal action under new business and provide to you the formal analysis of each line item that Ms. Turner will provide to you. Always looking at things glass half full, it will allow the committee to test that new process. And certainly, the feedback from the committee will always be taken and enacted upon.
So what I'd recommend in that, as that's presented to us, is that we should in tandem be presented with the administration's recommendations for which of these changes that have been laid out, we want to move forward with. You know, obviously, the administration can make those recommendations to us as part of that package so that as this gets communicated to the council, we can, you know, at the same time be showing them what steps we're taking to ensure that this doesn't happen again or that we reduce it as much as we can. Again, pandemic is, I mean, it's completely understandable. There have been, you know, delays and, and all kinds of unforeseen impacts from, from our response to COVID-19. So, I mean, this is a, in some ways, a very unique, in many ways, a very unique circumstance. But the better we build our systems, the, the less we'll have to deal with kind of the slings and arrows. So I'd recommend that we get a kind of two-fold report. One, that does give very strong backup and, and the, the important information we need about each one of these bills. And then in tandem, a listing of what the recommendations would be for actions this committee can take to improve our performance in this area. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Ms. Arden, did you have a question? You're all set. Mr. Hoey?
Just two quick things. One would be anytime you're paying a bill, I would never use the mail, especially right now. They're having a lot of problems in the post office. So we pay all our bills online. And second, on page five, Ms. Turner, our fiscal health. One thing I haven't seen, I know that teachers have been without a contract for like seven months, but I haven't seen anything about if we're, you know, how are we standing with our contractual obligations with unions? Do we owe them money still?
Can you clarify, Mr. Hoey? Do we owe them money?
Yeah, I want to, I always thought we still owed the unions some money. There was a figure, I don't have it in front of me, but pay raises of the past. Are they, are we even with our unions right now?
Dr. Hall, are you aware of the history that Mr. Hoey is referring to?
I, I think we are even, Mr. Hoey. I don't know if you're talking about in the summer initially, we didn't process the step raises as quickly as we may have in other years because we were worried about the funding. But the committee did vote to pay all those as they're legally obligated to do. So that's been done.
Okay. So thank, so right now, the teachers are without a contract for seven months, but we don't owe them any money at all, right? We're even?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions, Ms. Turner. On page 13, when you have like the Walker Incorporated, is a, on page 13?
Yes.
All right. So these are whatever, late invoices. So what happened to those three? Like, were those sitting in somebody's desk, you mean, then?
No, actually, they, so we received them when they, this is what, and I'm going to ask them, when I prepare this report that Ms. Martin mentioned, I'm going to give more detail. But what I think is the companies, when they were doing their year-end reviews, they noticed they weren't paid and they resubmitted them in December. So I can put that type of detail in there, like when it was, when it was submitted to us and, or who it was submitted to. But yes, it didn't just sit on someone's desk, to my knowledge. It was, we got it on December 20th and we processed it with by January 12th by bringing it to you. But, um, no, it was, it was a matter of the, the organization didn't send it along. And they didn't call and complain unless, like I said, the only thing we could, we were thinking of and we were trying to be fair to them is if they were calling old numbers for old employees like Jen McChrystal. Because they didn't call any of the new numbers because we would have been, the new special ed director would have been on top of it. He's very involved with trying to do reconciliations with finance. And, you know, if they contacted my team, we would have been on it because we know we don't like to get in trouble with bad bills, so.
Okay. So I'm sorry if you're going to repeat this, but, so if you have a PO go out in May, it doesn't get looked at to see if the services were done and then paid?
No, it actually does get looked at. And that's what I meant when I said, one of the improvements we've done is we look at it quarterly rather than annually. But what the problem is with all these special ed schools is the Walker School could have five, the purchase order could be opened with five, right? Five students. If they added special ed students, because SED, they always handled their own finances until just recently we've made changes. But if they added a sixth student, we wouldn't have a way of knowing that there's a sixth student on the purchase order if we're paying a bill for six students instead of five. So if that sixth student, if they weren't billing us for that student, we wouldn't know there's a missing invoice. Now, we have, we work with the special ed department to have a list of students. So now we can see on one list, there's 159 students, six of them are at Walker, but the purchase order only has five. So now we're able to look. All the time when you encounter these problems and you dig deeper, you find that there's a broke, something's broken along the way and what can we do to fix it? So in this case, the pandemic might have been the, you know, the, the problem that started it, but it's good because now we know we have to do more so that we don't ever let it go through the, it doesn't slip through the cracks, so.
Okay. So quarterly, you're still going to make our bills three months late. Is there a way to speed that up and look at them monthly?
Um, well, yes, because you know how I told you that that spreadsheet we have that lists every student, there's only 150 students, so it's a manageable spreadsheet. So as long as special ed works with finance and updates us on all the students that they get, and we have a reconciliation process between us, now Carrie Kern, what she does is she'll say, okay, we already paid September. We didn't pay October, but we paid November. Well, where did October go? That means October's missing. So now we're able to look by student, not just by purchase order. So now we have an extra level of internal controls to avoid this.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set with this report, everybody?
Thank you. I think what is important here as a takeaway is that this law gets enacted for multiple reasons. The scars of the past, as I understand it, were exercising this law due to the need by the committee for additional appropriation by the city. In this case, that's not what's occurring. Instead, the same law is evoked when it's a need for procedures to pay from the past fiscal year. The money is there. The school committee has the money. Each of these bills, each of these services were rendered and approved by the school committee. The school committee requires collaboration with city council in order to pay the services without an audit finding. There's no need to have an audit finding. We work through collaboration through the law to make sure that we can have these bills paid the appropriate way. And at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is to make sure that our businesses that support our school district, that have provided services during these tough times, are paid as quickly as possible. So it does create a little bit of a challenge in terms of having two buckets of bills going through the same law at different times, as Ms. Martin mentioned. But Ms. Turner, I do commend you for making sure that we get the first group of vendors paid as soon as we can, rather than having the vendor wait for multiple months due to what is a somewhat complex law that relates to municipal finance in the state of Massachusetts. So services were rendered, vendors are due payment, and the school committee has approved those payments previously and has the budget to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to summarize.
Thank you. Mr. Hoey?
Just one more quick thing, Mayor. Thank you very much. This, is Ms. Turner still here?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Just a quick question about, it's not a page, it's not a page number, but Zoom reimbursement for employees, 198.08 cents, and then the two tuition reimbursements for contractual benefits that we should be paying also. Have they, it says waiting for a solution from the city auditor. What are they waiting on? The signatures? Are they waiting on the grades to prove that?
No. She, there's a, you know how when we talk about fiscal years? Because the, like I, like I explained, if the course worked, some of the courses ended in March, let's say. But even in March, we, that was when the height of the pandemic was here. So no one was able to get to their principal for signatures. Some of the courses, on the other hand, were online courses and ended in June. So if that course ended in June and because of, you mentioned something earlier that I didn't get into the details of, but you've referred to the mail. One thing, I don't know if anyone was aware of this, but we didn't even have mail services from the Lowell Public, the post office. We had to go to Bill Ricker, we had to send our carias to Bill Ricker to pick up our mail because we had no mail. So during the pandemic, it wasn't just, we didn't have mail between city hall and schools and all that. We didn't have mails between post offices. So that was a perfect example of another, you know, situation that we faced with the, if the, if the teachers submitted everything they wanted to, but it went to Bill Ricker and sat there for weeks, they could have had it in one time, but unfortunately, we didn't get it until August and it would get turned back. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that the auditor's not doing what she should be doing. She should do what she's doing to encourage everyone to do things in a timely manner. But unfortunately, these are extenuating circumstances and the, the teachers need to get paid. I mean, they're, these are four, $500 courses and they, they're expecting it. And I get four or five emails every day from them asking where is their reimbursement? In this 29 of them, in the Zoom reimbursement, there were two of those.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Turner. The next, the next report that we have is a, the next report we have is a, is to provide for the committee the timeline by which we will be following for the fiscal year 22 budget. So FY '21, if you recall, we redesigned and relaunched the budgeting process to empower our school communities to enable and to ensure that our families, our teachers, our principals, those closest to our children, were empowered to make decisions on behalf of our students. Dr. Gillery will share with you the timeline that will be followed this year to ensure that we can bring back to the committee a comprehensive budget in the spring that includes the feedback and voices of our community that are all in line with the plans for improvement that our schools are developing right now for next year. So as I mentioned before, it gets harder before it gets easier. This is going to be some of the complex work that we shared with principals earlier that I'm also going to share with you as committee members. You're going to be in two parallel tracks as we talk about planning. Planning for reopening and continuously adjusting our current budget. And then we're going to also be in planning for next year and planning for next year's budget. Parallel tracks at the same time as we move through this spring. So we're going to work to provide you with updates to hopefully keep us all focused on which conversation we're in. But we will also certainly appreciate feedback for how we keep these conversations focused while we run those two parallel tracks for you, under your, under your governance and guidance. There's a, so Dr. Gillery's going to start by sharing with you our quality improvement planning process, which is our school improvement plans. That guides the way for what our plans will be at our schools for next year. I'll share with you a reminder, kind of a refresher, of how we then provide funding to schools so that they can then work with their school site councils, as Ms. Phillips will share with you, to build their financial plan for their educational plan. So Dr. Gillery?
Thank you. Good evening, committee. Good evening, listening audience. As Dr. Boyd said, we will touch on three topics in this brief presentation. The QIP, as it's commonly known in schools now. We'll share the timeline and the needs assessment process, the budgeting process that then dovetails onto the QIP, and the school site council timeline, which sits as the foundational element for these two pieces. So the QIP. As we've, we're laying out the timeline here that shows some of the major milestones. This certainly does not reflect all of the work that's going into this, but sort of the, the key milestones. So in December, at our December leadership meeting, we launched the introduction to a needs assessment tool, and I'll show you a vignette of that in here. But the idea was last year, as we were shifting the process, laying out the QIP, but also laying out fair student funding, those two processes were running simultaneously. This year, our goal, especially given all the aspects with the pandemic, the goal was to do a deeper dive on what are the needs of the school, build that plan out, then what is the financial plan that will allow us to work towards accomplishing those goals? So in the January leadership that actually happened today, we did a deeper dive on a needs, on the needs assessment with our principals, walked them through and actually did a workshop model. And what that entails is school leaders presenting their work or their process. We really focused on the process of what they're working on right now and getting feedback or ideas from their colleagues. So how can we build a greater community of learners with collective feedback? So those sessions were very well received by the principals and we felt bad about actually cutting off the conversation because the time had expired for the work. But as an example of something that's not reflected on here, then now what we're going to do is actually follow up with many sessions for school leaders following this to continue progressing this process through, in addition to all the other pieces that Dr. Boyd mentioned about simultaneously planning for the reopening as we're doing this work amongst all the other day-to-day operational and instructional work that leaders have to do. Then in February, we're going to be looking at the school data profiles and projections. What are we thinking that's happening with our enrollment projections? You all are aware that we saw a dip in enrollment this year, but we can anticipate that those numbers are going to rise for next year. And where are those students going to sit? If we had kindergarten students, for example, that opted out this year, more than likely, those six-year-olds, we're not going to be popping them back in kindergarten. They're going to be going to first grade. So what does that level of support mean for those students? Because that would be the age-appropriate grade level for them to be. And then what resources would be needed to be leveled at those positions? We also think about the, the idea of our students that are moving on. Some of them have been out of the building when March rolls around. Some of them theoretically could have been out of the building for a whole year at that point, when you look at a March-to-March transition. So those are real needs that our schools are working through and thinking through as they go through this process. So February, the end of February, the beginning of March, the ideas for the QIPS to be submitted. So as we look at sort of the vignette that I referred to, the QIP is, as we're focusing on the needs assessment protocol, what we shared in December was a resource, and you can see a short vignette here, that from each of your perspectives. So as a parent, what do you see as the needs of the school? As a teacher, what do you see as the needs of the school? And then as the school leader. So some of the questions that are posed here. Number one, when considering your student achievement results, what is working? Number two, in your opinion, what needs to be improved to increase student achievement across the school? And what evidence do you have to validate that thinking? Number three, as you think about student achievement in your school, what new school-wide planning or research-based strategies for supporting higher student achievement do you want to implement? Number four, ask about research-based instructional strategies and interventions. And then number five, ask about the professional development strategies that will improve results. And again, this is version one of this. So next year, then when we look at that, we say, how do we dig deeper in this? So the goal isn't to try to do everything all at once so that it's so overwhelming that you don't get through it, but how do we build capacity and sustain? So when we think about school improvement, it's about strategic maneuvers, but the idea is how do you sustain this work over long periods of time? The next slide, yes, Mayor?
Just before you move on, so we don't have to circle back. So who's completing this, this list of questions?
So in different schools, the, the school site council may be looking at this. Some schools send it out to their teachers for them to give feedback that's then going to their instructional leadership team. So different schools are implementing it in different ways, but the idea here was to communicate that we want to do, we want it to be more than, this is what I think, but this is about based on the data or the information. um, but this is about, based on the data or the information that we have about our school, and how better than do we, uh, take these, uh, leading, um, pieces of information, and then they roll into the QIP, um, as a roll-up. So this I, this is to get to the actual completion of the QIP. So what do we need? Why do we need it? What information do we have that says we need it, um, so that we get to a better point of, um, providing a QIP that's really comprehensive for them?
All right, so a quick follow-up on what Ms. Martin said. Explain to me how the consistency is there if every school has somebody different answering the questions?
Well, it's, um, so the idea is, um, that, um, those, those schools are looking at it based on what their specific needs are, um, and maybe set up our structures slightly different. You still have the bodies of work, everyone has a school site council that will be ultimately making the decision, their path to getting there may be, uh, may be slightly different, uh, but it doesn't invalidate, uh, someone else's work around that.
Okay, what do you mean by school site councils making what decisions, though?
Uh, well, the school, school site council is the one that approves the, the quality improvement plan at the very end, that's who ultimately says this is the plan that we're going forth with.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, and then the final slide is just meant to, again, be a graphic organizer that represents or shows or depicts the, the level and the detail of work that needs to occur. So you have four overlapping circles, um, the yellow being the demographics, sort of, you know, attendance behavior, SEL needs, our mobility rates. The purple is, uh, what are the perceptions? So what do people think? So that's, again, what's derived at this survey, uh, are the, the thinking aspect of it. The light blue column is the student learning or our achievement data, and then the darker blue is, um, around our student, uh, progress, or what information do we have for our students? So again, um, we let, to share this information with our leaders, so, because again, the idea is how do we dig deeper into what our needs are, so that we can build a plan that will, uh, help us reach our long-term goals, so both our short-term goals and our long-term goals. And with that, I stand for any additional questions.
Pause for a second there, uh, Dr. Gillery, and I think it might help the committee if we ask questions at the end, or certainly pause us if you need. There is a, but if you recall, uh, some of my initial report-outs to the committee during my very early days here in the district, was that we were operating as a system of contradiction. In some cases, we were operating as a centralized, highly centralized, uh, top-down district, in other ways, we were considering ourselves a highly autonomous, uh, site-based district. That contradiction created a scenario where I think the most powerful statement that was said by one of our leaders is it felt like, less like autonomy and more like neglect. Uh, it didn't, they were hearing the motion and, uh, noise of autonomy, they weren't seeing the structure and the system of autonomy. Well, here, if we're building in what we've determined and what the community has, uh, said to us, and what is a core component of our strategic plan, is a system of differentiated autonomy, ensuring that the people who are closest to our children are empowered to make decisions on behalf of our children while we're supporting our schools with where they are in terms of improvement. So you heard from Dr. Gillery in terms of how we can create a structure, uh, a system by which schools can individually plan and hear from that feedback. That then necessitates that we have a process to provide funding where decisions don't need to happen at this, in this room, in order to get resources out to schools. Previously, prior to last year, the decisions had to be made here in order to get resources out. How many teachers were you going to get? How many, uh, guidance counselors? How many support staff? You had to make decisions that impacted the educational program in order to get resources out to schools. A significant relaunch last year, if you recall, was fair student funding, which enabled us to provide funding based on students rather than funding based on personnel. So this is just a little bit of a refresher, I'm hoping it's quite fresh in your minds, but I know that we've lived through a lot since March, when was the last time you, you saw this? So, here you see, these are the slides that you, if you may recall, they were presented out and shared to you by the consultants that helped us rebuild our school-based budgeting system. Uh, so you see here the acronym SBB, that's student-based budgeting, which they called it. We changed that acronym because we were talking about site-based budgeting here that had the same acronym, so we called it fair student funding. So here, you're in fair student funding that leads to site-based budgeting, so please, uh, don't pay too much mind to the confusion of the acronym here if you can. Uh, but the first slide, we're back, can we go back? All right. So we create this to ensure equity within the system, we have weights based on student need, so students with greater needs can be allocated greater resources without determining how those needs will be met, allowing the schools to determine how the needs will be met, with ensuring still equity within the system. Transparency, we can then clearly communicate why one school perhaps gets more resources than another school in a manner that everyone can understand, and then enabling that flexibility. We increased, we're able to increase site-based decision-making authority ten times over last year, in terms of the amount of decisions that schools could make versus what they made the prior year. Uh, so the next slide is then just a graphic to, as a refresher for yourselves and the community in terms of how those weights might play out, and I think the next slide is, uh, most important. Now, uh, for the committee at this juncture, as we start to see how much, uh, overall revenue the school district will, um, receive from the state, remember, we created a pool of resources for schools that would then allow us to allocate according to two measures, one being stability, we don't want significant swings across schools as we move towards full equity. If you shifted entirely to the weights, schools that had shifting populations may see significant swings in their dollars, which then destabilizes our schools as we're working to change. This is going to be an equation that we also have to look at this year, because while you heard some good news in, uh, the initial forecast, there's also a lot of bad news looming in terms of the forecasts ahead of us. Uh, and we have not yet seen a full reopening of the economy. Of course, that's how revenue is generated by the state. So until we see the governor's proposal, we also have to see, uh, how those federal stimulus dollars are going to actually make their way through to the school district. We're going to have to make those decisions as we start to weigh this out, and as we build a pool that then is disseminated to schools through the weights that the committee has already established. There's not going to be a need to revisit those weights, but this balance is going to be necessary. So the schools will already have their plans for improvement, then the committee will be able to allocate resources in dollars, not in staffing, and then through, next slide? I want to actually go to the next one first. All right, so then through the school site council process, they'll be able to determine their funding plan for their educational plan. And then I'll take you back to, uh, kind of what's to expect going forward. Ms. Phillips, can you share a little bit about the school site councils, and then I'll take the committee back, so it's, uh, just as a reference slide that you can continue to reference as a resource for you going forward?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So, um, here is a timeline of some actions that we're taking, um, to ensure that our school site councils are, um, that they're participating, that they're aware of the process, and that we provide them with the tools that they need, um, to successfully maneuver this process. Last week, we sent, um, an assessment to our schools, um, to fill out so that we could see where each school site council is at, um, in the composition of members, in the, um, process of selection of members, um, as well as in the communication and, um, information that's available on the website. Um, so you should be able to go to any of the websites and see the updated membership on the websites, the agendas, the minutes. Um, schools were able to flag challenges that, that are still outstanding, um, and we're supporting them with that. Um, in some cases, some, some, um, members left the committee and now, uh, they're trying to fill those seats, you know, through the election process, it's a challenge, you know, in this current, you know, environment, but nonetheless, um, every school is working toward having, you know, their, their, um, full committee complete by the end of this month, even though it's something that has been ongoing, you know, most of our site councils have been meeting, but again, um, there, there definitely have been challenges due to, um, the pandemic. But I am, um, reviewing all of the assessments that they submitted, um, we'll be sending out the survey to the different members to see, um, you know, what support they need going into this, this, this year's process. Uh, we did share, final election should be completed, um, you know, this month, and then we're planning a refresher training, um, once all of the pieces, once we have all of the pieces, Dr. Gillery has, um, initiated the, 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 uh, quality improvement process training with, with principals to be able to lead their staffs, um, their school committees through this process. Um, we also added in the anti-racism training for our families to have consistency across our district. Um, many of our site councils are still, are still, um, having challenges with diversifying the, the councils and reflecting the, the student, uh, body that they serve, and we do want to provide, um, training for our parent representatives, just in the decision-making process, the, the same things that our staff are reflecting on, um, in regards to, um, racism, barriers, inequities, uh, we want our families to be aware of that as well. And then, um, we're, we're open to providing additional training, um, based on the feedback that we get, um, particularly from our families. And then, in April, June, once this year's process is completed, um, we want to assess open membership seats and plan elections for the following year. You know, we, the, the process was disrupted this, this past year, but we are hopeful that, that now that we've really been prioritizing site councils, that for the next school year, uh, we'll just have a, um, a smoother start.
All right, if you can, go back to the prior, the prior slide. This is here for, as a resource for you, as a committee, um, what to, what you can expect within this year's budget build-out. All of these things might not be coming to you, but it is ultimately the committee's budget to adopt, and obviously, the school-based budgets are a significant portion of the budget. So the school site councils have extraordinary authority here, and I, if there's any questions along the way, as you go, as we go through these steps, this is kind of a guiding document that you can see where, uh, the schools are, and then also you'll get those updates from Ms. Turner as she provides you the regular updates that'll now be a standing agenda item for the committee along the way. As you can see, uh, you know, the end of the year will be here before we know it, uh, yet there's extraordinary amount of work between now and then. With that, uh, Mr. Mayor, we'll stand for questions.
Do I have any questions from the floor? Tell me, uh, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, beginning with the, with the, the QIP, so, I know that we want to give each school site their own kind of pathway that they can create, which I think is great. But can we legitimately look at the school site council being the, the entity that's responsible for conducting, for answering the questions, for, you know, setting the goals, and then for moving into the, the budgeting process? Is that the responsible entity as opposed to, like, the principal or the teachers? It really is the school site council that should be driving this process? That's kind of a question with an editorial added in.
So, um, I think, I think the idea is, um, the larger idea is how do we get the whole school or the whole community's input on that? And then the school site council, so you, you, you may get a list of a hundred needs. The reality of it is, is that your budget, the amount of money that you're actually going to receive will not fund all of those hundred needs. So then how does the school site council go through a process of whittling that down, looking at the goals, um, in conjunction with the school principal to determine, and this is, this is the core, this is the body of work that we're going to really hyper-focus on over the coming year? So the, the school site council is the one, in conjunction with the school leader, that will, that will whittle this down and say, this is the, this is the plan that we are going to abide by for the coming year.
So, so the, the, and the school site council has a particular makeup, correct? So that it has parents, it has teachers, it has obviously the principal. Am I right in assuming that there's, um, that it's set up with kind of a, a parent as the chairperson? The principal is functioning as the administrative support, um, and, and kind of guiding the process, but that it's the, it's a, a, a parent who's basically the, the chairperson of each one of these, or whatever you call them on it?
I think it's the, the lead, the principal and the parent representative as the co-facilitators of the session.
Okay.
Yeah. Am I correct with that? Chief Phillips?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, so I think that, you know, and that, I, I think the more we can offer, um, opportunities and, and training for leadership for our parents, um, in that role, and our teachers in that role, uh, on the school site council, I, I think that's, that's great. Um, as we look at kind of the what-to-expect list out of all this, I would love to be able to build into this an opportunity for, um, whether it's the finance subcommittee or the full committee, uh, one of the things I really had kind of wanted to, to hear from the, the site councils, what their experience was like, um, and if we could set up what, again, subcommittee, special meeting, whatever we, whatever's easiest, so that you could have the, the, you know, the, the principal and the, the key parent leader from those site councils, be able to talk with us about how they answered those five questions, about how they went through their, their budgeting process to come up with how they're allocating their fair student funds. Um, I think particularly for the parents who are taking this leadership role, it would be, um, I just think it would be incredibly helpful for us to hear from them directly about the experience, about, um, how their priorities are mirrored in it. So I, I would like, as you, as we look at the what-to-expect, if we could build in, uh, an opportunity for that, um, again, however, you know, however we do it.
One of the things, we actually, don't mean to cut your flow, is we actually shared that with school leaders, um, as a part of this process, so again, that's not listed here, uh, but we actually shared that very thing with them, uh, today, to say, uh, once you go through this process, then what's your communication plan about what you're focusing on? How do you share that out? What's the elevator speech? Because that was my challenge to them today, is, uh, everybody that's engaged in this process, can they give the elevator speech about what's actually included, uh, in this body of work? So I think your, uh, request there is very timely, uh, as to the work that's happening.
Beautiful.
Dr. Gillery, can you take that note, uh, if you could, and, uh, make sure that we can add that within, within the timeline accordingly? I think it's a great suggestion, and, uh, uh, I would say for the committee, and I appreciated the, the language there, some of the work that we're working to make sure we can do with our school site councils is that their educational plan, their QIP, is what drives this process. The budget does not drive their educational plan, the educational plan drives, drives the budget. So I think it would be beneficial, Dr. Gillery, the committee can then hear from each step of the way, and maybe that's an opportunity to have different schools come at different steps of the way, so they, the, the committee can then get additional feedback. If you can take that note, Dr. Gillery, I'll follow back up, Mr. Mayor, with, uh, the thinking of which subcommittee would work appropriately, if, what I'm hearing is the desire of the board to have a, have a subcommittee be utilized for that purpose. Sometimes it's a question as to whether the subcommittee's been authorized by the committee. Does that work for the committee for me, just to work directly with the mayor as to which, which subcommittee hears that, those presentations?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, and then my final question, this is more on the, on the fair student funding budgeting process. I know as we went through this last year, you know, schools made informed choices about where they wanted to, to spend those dollars. So for some schools, it was, uh, an extra, uh, you know, I'm making this up, but a guidance counselor, or a, they were investing in some curriculum system, things like that. How do we accommodate, you know, it, again, the, we talk about wanting to eliminate kind of the swings, the dramatic swings of, of, uh, decision-making. If we've moved someone into, for example, a guidance counselor role, and then in the next year, there's some other pressing need, are we pulling that person out and then, yeah, just kind of wondering how we're, whether it's instructing the, the council, or kind of how we're managing ourselves? Are there times when those positions will just flip into the regular budget and then become part of that school's complement?
Yeah, there's two parts of it. I'm going to, um, ask, uh, Dr. Gillery to give, to share with the committee what the budget defense process looks like, how schools actually provide out, uh, uh, through a collaborative conversation, uh, with different department heads, how they're meeting different expectations for the school. Prior to even getting there, there's additional guidance documents that come out to the school in terms of what mu, what are the must-haves, what are the choices? We call those the locked and unlocked, uh, decision- We call those the locked and unlocked, uh, decisions for the school. So these are resources you have, but these decisions are locked for you, either by virtue of law or virtue of school committee policy. These are decisions that have already been made for you. These are other decisions that are unlocked within your realm. And then the school itself, uh, goes through a process at the culmination of all of this and, and sharing out with, uh, Dr. Guillory, Ms. Desmond, and representatives from their teams, here's how my budget connects back to my quip. Here's how I'm making decisions related to the locked and unlocked, and here's how, uh, if a decision is such as that, how it makes sense for our school community. Sometimes they're approved and sometimes they're not, based on the answers that are shared. Uh, Dr. Guillory, can you, uh, share out what that budget defense looks like?
Yes, so, um, I think you've, you've actually summarized it quite well. Um, but the process is, or that we utilize is that, um, once schools go through, um, all of these steps and they get, um, their allocations, all of those pieces, and these are the additional purchasing power, uh, that we want to, uh, expend that on, um, there's a conversation about that. So, uh, and we look at it again in terms of their trends, um, for that very reasons around, around stability, so that you don't have what appears to be whimsical or the, the pendulum swinging back and forth. Uh, so we try to give very, um, uh, specific guidance around that. If we're seeing a trend line, for example, if you, um, some, the, some of the resources may be, and I'm gonna use an example that's not a good one, but you'll get the gist of it, is if I want to purchase an additional ELL teacher, for example, if my school, um, has thirty-five ELL students, um, and the ratio may be one to seventy across the district, again, made up numbers, um, we're not going to necessarily allow you to purchase an additional L teacher with thirty-five students, uh, in that regard, because that's not, that's not a sustainable, uh, pattern when you look at the equity aspects across the district. So we try to address those pieces early on in the, um, the guidance documents that Dr. Boyd referenced, um, so that we try to maintain that level of stability, because, um, if you, if you have a drastic or if you don't have the funding to actually support or pay for that, then your excess funds, you're going to essentially encumber them all in a position, and you're gonna lose your purchasing power in other areas. So, um, that's an extreme example that I think makes the point.
Ms. Doherty and then Mr. Hoey.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I'm very excited about this work because I think that the involvement and engagement and empowering of parents is gonna have, uh, a real impact on our schools. So my questions really have to do with the, uh, school site councils. Uh, I know they're state mandated that we have these councils. Are there also mandates from the state around how these people are elected or whether they, what terms of service they have? Are they a two-year terms, one-year term? Do we know anything about that?
Ms. Phillips?
Um, so Committee Member Doherty, the, the teachers are, or teacher representatives are elected by teachers and the parent representatives are elected by parents. Um, the principal can appoint some other, um, community members to the committee, but it's not to exceed, um, fifty percent of the committee.
Know if they serve a certain number of years or what is the term for parents that are elected or teachers?
I, I believe it's up to two years. Um, I'd have to check if it's flexible, one year versus two, but I believe it's two years.
So, uh, in line with that, and I know you, you said that every school website will have information, which is huge for me, uh, because we didn't have that consistency even a year and a half ago. Um, I, I also want to make sure, because I see these parents as leaders in the school and as representatives of the other parents in the school, right? Because when they're sitting at that table and they're making voting decisions about the budget, you know, they're impacting all the children in that school. So is all their, is their contact information included? So if I am a parent at a certain school and I want to reach out to my school site council members, will I be able to contact them and know who they are?
Sorry, I wanted to double-check with Jim, but, um, I, I don't believe a lot of the contact information is currently shared, but if that's within their role, um, you know, typically we wouldn't share, um, you know, parent individual contact info, but if they're serving in, you know, an elected school-based position, I think, um, having information available would be, you know, expected and, and appropriate, so we can follow up on that.
I also could just establish their own school department email addresses, so that as members of the committee, they, they just get assigned that and we can promote that.
That's true. If they weren't comfortable giving out personal information, some school-based email or even leaving a message with the school secretary or something that would then be able to get to the parent and say, "Reach out to this member of your community, they have a question" or whatnot. But I think as we move forward, we're looking at, um, you know, this, this fair student funding, um, is a way to really bring it down to those frontline people, but we're always working with this balance between what is the role of central office, what, you know, and what is the role of each individual building? And I think that part of what Dr. Guillory was alluding to with Ms. Martin's questions about the budget and being able to make decisions is, there's got to be some standard that we set, you know, here from the central office about, you have this many ELL students, you need to have this many teachers, or what, you know, whatever those requirements are around the learning, that the school must conform within that, because we want a, a baseline, a, a high standard for all our schools in terms of the instruction. So I think I do appreciate this effort, um, to really bring it to the frontline people in the schools to be able to make those decisions. But then I throw it back again, as, um, Ms. Phillips knows, I'm also very concerned about the school site councils themselves, that they have the training and the support, especially where many of our schools had their first active school site councils last year, right around this time. So to, to, I, I'm really happy to see that there's gonna be a follow-up with those school sites, there's going to be opportunities for additional training, and, um, I, I, I think that, that's the right way to go. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, I just want to make a few points about a school site council. I thought they'd been going on a little bit longer than a year. I remember my neighborhood school, the Pine School, they had one, and they can have a school site council that, uh, had Jay Lang on it, okay? So sometimes your school site councils can get overbearing for a principal, too. They might be smarter than the principal. Uh, what I like the most about all of this is the principal's in charge of the money. The budget lies with the principal. So I think he'll form his own school site councils anyways. Uh, most of our principals, you look at, and I think when I hear Ms. Phillips say, "Some schools are having a hard time finding people, uh, diversity to get on these, um, school site councils," what I think we need to do is look at the Pine School, look at the Wang, look at the Daly, look at the Maury, and see what goes right for those schools. And, uh, they might be able to give us some information on how to attract the right people. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so I, I think if you sit on a, a school site council, shouldn't that be all public information anyways? Because you want the parents to get in touch with them, right, I would think? So we're gonna make it easier for the parents to get in touch with them somehow. Um, and then the only other thing on the report, um, can you, uh, provide these in color to us next time? That would be a big help. Thank you. Any other questions on this?
Yes, yes. There's, um, the goal's always to have them to you in color, though, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna, we'll do the color.
All right. Well, when we're talking purple circles, I can't see them, so. Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I just had one more question for clarification. When we're looking at the school budgets, right, and how much money they have, if one school has a higher population of special education students or a higher population of ELL students than another school, that allotment of staffing is gonna be part of the baseline for that school, right?
Some.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't come into that extra money that you can spend the way you want, because if you have more ELL students, you're gonna need more ELL teachers or more special ed students. So is that true, that you would have a baseline?
You have a baseline, then you have, then you have the weights. It also is true that you have your locked and unlocked decisions. So all of that of what you're sharing fits into both of those. So your baseline is still within your school budget, but those would then be within locked decisions related to ELL, special education. So you'll see a baseline plus weights. It's not an all or nothing, though, because many schools supplement and support those populations beyond even the baseline.
Right.
So you will still see an allocation of weight for students, even though the baseline will be, yes, meeting, uh, basic requirements of the law.
Right. And, and which would be consistent for every school across the district.
That's.
You have this population of special education students or ELL students, you're gonna get this amount of staffing to support those students.
Yes, and the baseline guards then against a school not having enough money to be able to support the basic requirements of the law. So you have the baseline plus the weights.
All right. Mr. DeCorto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any way for us to know what the current makeup of our school site councils are made up? I mean, how many parents are involved, how many teachers are involved, how, and so forth? Is there any, any way of getting all those numbers?
Ms. Phillips?
We, we can add up that information. I mean, it's there on the website individually by school, but, um, are you asking for a tally of, of all parents across the district?
Yeah.
Like, how many parents are serving across the, the twenty-eight schools?
I think it would be good to know that.
Yes, we can, we can provide that if that's what's being asked.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips, you don't have it, you don't have it at the, ready?
Right.
If you can make sure you can provide that out to the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted to add to what Mr. DeCorto said. I think that would be very helpful for us going forward. We're gonna be getting these in our packets regularly, right? Updates on the.
You'll get budget updates, yes.
And the budget. So at some point, include a page of, you know, this is your school site council by school, parents, teachers, who the community representative is, things like that. Um, and it just puts it in one solid place for us to be able to see.
Sure. Ms. Phillips, can you take that note, make sure it's in the next update?
Do you need that in the form of a motion, or?
It should just go on the website. How, why don't we just put it on the website? You should have school site councils for.
Oh, on the central office?
Yeah, why not?
On the central office page of the website?
Yeah, because it's public information. You should know if you're researching a school, who's on the butt, who's on the s, school site council and why not it, right?
Well, that's the plan, is each school will have not only information of who's on their school site council with contact.
By February first, turn it.
When are their meetings? What are the agendas for the meetings? What are the minutes for the?
Yeah, exactly.
That would be on every school. Um, I think what Mr. DeCorto was talking about is just one place for all of them that we would be able to see.
Yeah, well, why couldn't we look on the website also, like parents? Right? Just make it easy, put it in one place on the website, and you can look at your school si, school site council. And then you'd have information to, who to contact. You wanna do that?
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, I just wanna say that I appreciate, I'm, I've just been going through a few of the schools and seeing the school site council information up there, and I, I appreciate the effort it takes to get it all, um, collected here and understand, um, from working on websites and my, some of the work that I've done in the past, I know how difficult it can be to get this in and continue to maintain it. And, um, so I think, I think it's great to be seeing it here, and the, the sites are including, you know, the parent versus teacher, kind of what the role is. I think it's awesome that we have this information even up and available to be looking at, um, at this point, as well as the meeting agendas and the dates. So I just want to appreciate, uh, your team, um, for helping to support the schools in getting this information up and running and, and right, I think, hearing what some of the other challenges are. I know, you know, even if you have a new member join, it might take a little bit of time for even that to be updated, because it's not, unfortunately, as easy as just updating a, a Word document or an Excel document, um, to get it up on the web. But, but our website and the information and communication in general has really been outstanding. Um, I've said it before, the text messages that we're getting now, the, um, the LOL connector, uh, communication that went out is really fantastic in putting additional information into the hands of our students, uh, and families and community members. And I just think it's so important that we continue to do this good work, um, and make sure that it's in, you know, the right direction. And I appreciate Mr. Hoey's comment, you know, about we can learn from each other, but, you know, the more that we get information out to families in, in a way that they've become used to and accustomed to, and knowing where to find the information on our website, you know, will encourage additional community participation, um, and family participation in things like our school site council. So thank you for this.
All right, thank you. You, just one clarification, you kind of lost me. So are you looking on the school website or?
Yep, each of the school websites under, if you go to the, uh, A school, so I'm looking at the Butler Middle School right now, under the "Our School" tab at the top, it lists, um, different options, and so one of those options is school site council. If you click on that, it lists, it actually, on their particular site, it does what is the school site council, you know, why you have it. Um, it identifies the members, that's a, uh, an option, and then also meeting notes and agendas.
So we're already doing that?
Yeah, yes, right. I think that's what even, um, Ms. Phillips was commenting on, that this is, even having this information up to date and on our website is, is something new. It's a step in the right direction, um, and it, it's really important that it's there. We, we, you know, the, it should have been there a long time ago, but, but it takes a lot of work to get it there. So good that it's there now, good that it's being updated more regularly with information. And it's not as easy, um, to just sometimes, it's, it's great, I think, the way that it's organized. If people know where to find it, then they can go and be looking for their particular school or look at another school's website, you know, depending on what they're interested in.
So who, who runs them? Each school runs their own? Right?
Um, so that's correct. Our webmaster created a template.
Yeah.
To, to help facilitate the ease of posting.
So we're already doing it? Okay, good. All right. Any questions? Anything questions on the status of the outstanding motions? Or report on motions, yeah? All right, so we'll go to eight-four-one, motion by Mr. Hoey. Any questions on that one? No?
But we have to. With that, I just wanna say thank you for that. No, I have no questions.
Okay. Uh, eight-four-point-two, any questions? Well, Mr. Dillon's not here, but any questions on his motion?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we'd want to table that until the next meeting, so Mr. Dillon would have an opportunity to respond.
Sure, we can table that. Any questions on eight-four-point-three? Uh, Mr. DeCorto? Sure, Mr. DeCorto?
I have a couple of questions about that. I'm sure the high school teachers are really appreciative of, of common planning time that, that they ne, they could have never had, unless this was being, uh, this way. On page four, uh, how, on the, about halfway down the freshman academy, the seminar support and so forth, uh, how much success has been, uh, obtained with, um, uh, the seminar support block?
Ms. Desmond or Dr. Guillory, either of you have information for, Mr. DeCorto?
I, I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get that from, uh, Ms. Rothschild and provide that at our next meeting.
Okay. Um, on page six, they're talking about the biology MCAS, that's gonna be a determination for graduation. I, I just have to ask why? That's, that's just a, I don't expect an answer. I just, I don't get it. There were so many other priorities, but I, I don't know. Uh, on page seven, um, the three-hundred-and-fifty home visits that were conducted, uh, for attendance purposes and so forth, uh, what level of, of success has there been with those, from those visits?
Yes, Dr. Guillory?
So again, I think similarly, um, we'd.
So again, I think similarly, um, we'd have to ask the high school to provide their specifics around that. I know when, in having a conversation with Mr. Fiatto about that, uh, the home visits were for a variety, uh, of things, and, uh, they tried to do the package deal if there's a struggle with attendance as well. Um, so what their outcomes are, I think each one has its own, um, sort of directive, but we can get more information on what the outcomes have been of that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, and I, I get it, that there are a thousand reasons that they're not coming in, or that they're not logging in. Uh, it, I have a question pertaining to the progress of monitoring. Uh, is there a means for our teachers to keep track of how long our students are online for classwork? Uh, it, or, and is freezing, quote unquote, freezing, uh, an issue used to mask leaving your computer, as it were?
Ms. Desmond?
So we do have, uh, some different methods. Some of them are how teachers differentiate the instructional model. So oftentimes, teachers will, um, use different modalities to capture student engagement while online. So there's, you know, there's some work that's happening in Google while they're zooming, and then there's also work that might be happening through Padlet and some other products that we have available. Uh, the other thing is we have purchased something called Bloxy, um, and, uh, we, we do offer, um, videos on our curriculum website about what exactly Bloxy is, but the teachers have been using it since the start of the school year. It allows teachers to be able to wa- um, see the activity that is happening on the students' desktops. So you can see exactly what applications the students are using. So say you think it's, something's frozen, uh, you could, uh, look to see what's happening on that desktop, and you might be able to see the student is actually using another application at the same time, which would indicate that it isn't frozen, right? So there's all kinds of, um, things that are in place right now to determine the engagement of students in this virtual environment.
That's very encouraging. I'm very happy to hear that. Thank, thank you on that. Um, on page eight, I'm sorry, this is taking so long, everybody. Um, on page eight, um, the career, uh, the Career College and Career Center, uh, blurb of that, what percentage of seniors have taken advantage of that? Do we know that yet?
Ms. Desmond?
I don't have that exact number, but I will get it and report out next meeting.
Okay, thank you on that. Um, the social and emotional supports, uh, when can we expect that, uh, to, to kick in? Do we know?
Ms. Desmond, yeah?
So we've been providing supports to the students right along, um, particularly at the high school. They've been using, um, a product called Panorama to be able to assess students. We also have used Des- uh, DESO, which is Devon Ro- Deveraux, um, scale to determine, um, if students are, um, in a, a range that they need additional supports or additional looking at. So, um, all of those things were implemented in the fall, and, um, we've gotten some rounds of data, and we're looking at that with, uh, school teams and determining what the next steps are.
Um, the bottom page eight, the after-school tutoring, um, it, it's indicating that there were 125 after-school tutoring sessions. Does that mean only 125 students took advantage of the tutoring?
Ms. Desmond?
Uh, I'm not sure if that is, uh, per student, but I can find out, um, but that's ongoing. So, um, that's still being offered. So as students need support, uh, it's available for them, uh, and that will continue through the year.
Okay. Um, and, and the last, uh, last thing is, is toward the bottom of page nine, uh, the early college promise grant submission and so forth, where there, uh, different programs are being offered as, uh, a fifth year of high school at, at MCC and so forth. At what cost to our students? This cannot be an additional fee for our students. I, I, this, I, thank you.
Ms. Desmond?
Yes, so this is actually exciting, this, we, we actually just heard that we received this grant. Um, this grant will fund, um, this model of fifth-year engagement, which allows our students to access our career college supports while they're at, attending middle-sex community college. So this is going to be funded through the grant. This is really an opportunity for students who may not have, um, family members or, um, someone to go to when there are some, uh, struggles that they might be experiencing at the college level. Uh, this gives them the opportunity to access some staff that they have existing relationships with at our high school, um, to support them in some of the questions they might have or the guidance they might need. And, uh, for anyone who's new to the college environment, I think that's critical, uh, for being able to be successful and continue enrollment. So this is very exciting. This, we just received this, so it has not started yet. It will start next year.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. And that's, that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houghey.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Um, page 10 of this report, uh, I kind of want to just go over a few things, Law High School Student Advisory Council. They have 105 students involved in that. And, uh, I like the way the new head of high school is, it, uh, help me with his last name, Mr. Fiatto? Is that how we pronounce it?
Yep.
I just want to give him a big heads up for meeting with those 105 students every week on a weekly basis. I think that's a fabulous thing. Number two, the, the, the last thing I want to touch is, uh, the sports. I know right now we have, uh, girls' basketball and hockey have just started recently. I tried to call the A.D. today to find, get an update on how everything's looking, but what I, my mo- biggest concern is, is when you look at 350 kids that are up there participating in all kinds of strength training and everything else. Uh, football, about 80, 75 to 80 students I seen on that field several times. This is going back a while ago. And, um, that new turf that you have out there is unbelievable. But I'm wondering, Mr. Superintendent, about football. It's coming up pretty soon in February. And have you talked to other MVC teams? Does it look like it's, everything's a go right now? Does that still-
What's the superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor. There's, uh, I talk with the other superintendents, uh, Fri- on Fridays regarding athletics and the continuation of sports, uh, getting into whether we're going to Fall Two and the status of Fall Two. I'll start, we'll start to get into those conversations here shortly. Uh, from an athletic direct, at the superintendent level, the athletic director perspective, uh, Ms. Desmond, do you have any additional update for Mr. Houghey regarding Fall Two? I'll give an update to the committee as I have the update. Fridays, I typically convene with the Merrimack Valley Conference Superintendent, so.
Thanks.
Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I thought this was an excellent report. I really want to thank everyone who put all the time and effort into it. It really had a lot of substantive information that I think, for me, was very helpful. Um, and I really appreciate, most of it is from the high school, you know, really digging down from page two on was really the high school, and it's great to see that they're doing all this good work, uh, to try to keep our kids moving forward despite the challenges of being in a primarily remote, uh, learning environment. Uh, so what I want to say is, um, regarding page two, the top, where it talks, talks about the Assessment Task Force, who that consists of, what are the overarching questions that they're asking, you know, where are we seeing successes in the data? What led to those success? How do we replicate them? They are working on a report that it says should be completed by the end of March, right? I would really like that report to be shared with the school committee, um, as, you know, a line item on whenever that, it's ready, end of March, early April, whatever, so that we get a chance to look at it and, um, and really see the outcome of what these, obviously, these are some, some of our key leaders, uh, and teachers, and to just hear what the results of the, their study would be, I think, very informative for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next report was the, regarding the review of bad bills. Any questions on that, Ms. Martin? All set? Um, motion response, 84.5, Ms. Doherty, any questions on that?
Yes, Your Honor, I, I have to say, I really didn't feel like the questions I was looking to get answered were answered in this report. Um, and maybe I'm just missing stuff, because I know it did reference a link, and I did not have my, I did not have Wi- Wi-Fi with me. I did this from the hard copy. But the first 26 pages were just lists of attendance by weeks, by school. Um, page 27, also on page 26. So I, I'm really looking for the data to inform what we know about remote learning, right? Most of our students since March have been learning remotely. So I know that you must, this team, the administrative team, working with our building principals, must be looking at how successful is remote learning? What have been the areas of big challenge? What have been the areas we've been successful at? And that's what I was trying to get at, using, as we, you said in the earlier report, uh, data that informs us, um, about our schools and our ability to assess remote learning district-wide. And that's, was my intention with this motion, but I didn't get that from this report. So page, like I said, the first 26 pages were lists of attendance. I'm, I was looking to see specifically about concerns I had heard about huge differences in class sizes. And that's why I wanted to break down whether it was a remote class from the beginning or whether it was an in-person class, so we could look at, I'd been hearing huge differences in the size of remote learning classes, like, you know, 28 students in one kindergarten class and 10 in another. And you, you know what, so I didn't see data to, that addressed class size in a way at all. Page 26, um, after we went through these lists of weeks and attendance that didn't really tell me very much, 26 had a line, teacher and para attendance. 97, and I, I didn't really know what that meant. Then on page 27, I wanted to know how effective the Florida Virtual was being, so I had asked how many people, um, had used the license, and I did, that, I did not count multiple logins, so that's what I got on the bottom of 27. So that question wasn't answered. Um, then there were, 34 was not readable, 30, pages 30 to 33 were DESI statements about time on learning. They're defining what's, what they, requirements are about town on, time on learning. When I was really looking for, what are we doing district-wide in terms of consistency for time on learning? Really looking for something that was going to give us a comprehensive report about the remote learning that's happening in our district. Um, and I, unfortunately, I, I don't know if, if I'm missing something, but what I have here doesn't answer that question for me. So I, I, I don't want to accept that, this as a report of progress, because it's missed the mark. But I'm happy to work with, uh, Dr. Boyd or whoever, if, to, um, be clear on what I'm looking to get. We did used to be able to get reports like this, that looked at the district and we could see immediately that these ninth grade, you know, or not ninth, but let's say a middle school class at this school was way higher than the middle school classrooms at other schools. So those are the kinds of things I was looking at, not just to get it, but to put it in a context that we could see what evidence is supporting that we're doing remote learning well, and what are the challenges we faced that maybe we could come up with some adjustments, especially as we're looking forward to bringing kids back in and knowing that, you know, best-case scenario is, you know, what, in, in March, we'll have 25% back in school? And that's if the numbers and all the other pieces continue to align for us. So the remote learning is very important, and that, that was my intention, um, with this motion.
So I can, Ms. Doherty, I can work with you offline to make sure you get the answer you're looking for. The Florida Virtual data, if you look at 27 to 28, so there's, 27 gives you the, is kind of the summary, and then you have the data with the, uh, along with the key terms over in the, in the caption corner. So there's, uh, the data's there. Perhaps it's an interpretation of the motion. I will tell you and the full committee, our data capabilities have been improved consistently, uh, since my arrival here to the district. Uh, there were significant gaps in the, uh, data accessibility, so I don't know what year is being referenced in terms of what accessibility previously was had, uh, but our data capabilities are significantly far more advanced now than what they were previously.
So, sorry, Dr. Boyd, if you can tell me how many, you're saying that the, since the, the number of virtual student licenses assessed through November 15 was what? Where is that number? Because I didn't see it.
If you look at, you see the 27 bottom, and go to 28, and then you have the data table.
That, okay, so no, on 28, it says the number of classrooms being led by paraprofessionals. That was another point I wanted to know.
No, oh, okay, so the, the, the heading, you go to the, then the data table. So the data table will not break when you do a printout. So the data table, if, it's, it's not going to break in the center of the data table. What it'll ultimately do is it'll do a page break and then print out on the next page when you do a printout for the hard copy. So, so what you're, so you're not going to see a, you're not going to see a break in the center of the data table. So you, so you see where the, so I see that there's a lot of white space. So here it says the number of virtual, then you can go over here to the data table is right below it. So, but right below it in the printout means that it's on the next page.
Total original logins, so it's the, okay, so I'm, I'm going to go back to the subcommittee meeting that we had last week on equity, which we had a good amount of data then, too. And it, at that time, it was given to us at the meeting. I didn't, I couldn't read it from the screen or even the hard copy. But if there's context with the data, that's really going to help. So the data shows, and then there's no context to say, how many, so the Robinson had 107? Total original logins? Is that what that, you're telling me the data table is on page 28? That goes with the statement on page 27?
Yes.
That's what you said, okay. So then, does that mean page 29 is the list of classrooms being led by paraprofessionals? That's on the following page? Okay, so now I'm getting that. So we have, right now, we have a number of, uh, paraprofessionals, like, let's just look at the Rogers School. One, two, three, four? Grade teachers, right? We've got a grade three, a grade five, a kindergarten, and a grade one are being taught by paras. That's what that's saying to me, right?
Uh, Dr. Hall, can you assist Ms. Doherty?
Uh, that's what I would say, Mrs. Doherty. They would have, depending upon how long they've been there, they would be licensed, but if it was a temporary situation, they may not be fully licensed, because they may be substituting for maternity.
Yeah, so it, just that example right there, as you can see, now that I understand the, the charting system, um, you know, we've got paras, a grade three para teaching, a para teaching grade three since August 31, um, and a para teaching grade five since September, or grade one since September. That's a concern for me. Uh, and I, and another concern for me is how difficult this report was to figure out. As I said, I, my intentions were to get a, a, a picture about our remote learning, the challenges and the successes and the, and how we're working to improve it. And it shouldn't be this difficult to understand. So now I'm getting, so the, please see the December 5th regarding structured learning time guidelines, and then you switch to page 30, and that's basically stuff off of, I believe, the DESI website. They've changed their definition of, like, there's workshops, I mean, there's Principal Student Learning Time worksheet, like, why these are examples that are going to be useful to me, I'm not sure. I'm really looking to figure out what's happening in Lowell around remote learning. And I know you guys are looking at that, right? I mean, clearly, the report based on Mr. DeCorto's motion about what we're doing to deal with the, the losses and, that's more on target to what I was looking for. And I, I really, I think this is so important- And I really, I think this is so important, I need to send it back and say, let's do it with the data and the context, what it's telling you, and how that's motivating you to move in a certain direction. I mean, we talked about the challenges around engaging students. I mean, I thought that was an excellent question, I forget who asked it, and, you know, what steps we're taking. We're just looking, I'm looking to be informed on this issue because I think it is very important. Thank you.
And there's, Mr. Mayor, if I could, what you're sharing now is a very, very different motion in terms of language, and it would receive a very different response. Here you have, what protocols are in place to ensure consistency and structured learning time and quality of instruction district-wide? So what was being shared are the protocols themselves with that response, but there's about, this is a significant motion for staff to be able to respond to. So I will talk with you offline, let's try to understand it, and if I can get it framed in a way that I can understand the motion, then I can frame it in terms of directing staff to respond to it. So if you're open to that, Madam Committee Member, I certainly would welcome that conversation tomorrow.
I'm open to pursuing whatever communication will get us the information. I think it is a valid question to assess how we're doing with the remote learning. So if there's a way to do it that's not an erroneous amount of staff time, but gets us the data and the information we need, I'm open to that.
Yeah, those are our school dashboards and our KPIs that we monitor quarterly. We also have school-based data dashboards that we, that all of our schools utilize. So we have that, that data readily available and accessible daily, that's then shared out quarterly with the committee. The next scheduled meeting at February 17th, you'll get your second quarter report on the key performance indicators. Right now, we're 100% remote districts, so there wouldn't be any differentiation in the data between remote versus the district-level data. So you'll definitely receive that on February 17th. If there's additional plug-down data, though, certainly I'd welcome the conversation tomorrow so we can get clarification.
And also, and I'll just end on this, if there's any questions, like, before you do the work, you could also reach out to me if there were concerns about what I was trying to get at, which was just this comprehensive view of what remote learning was looking like across, with very specific questions about aspects of it, such as the class size consistency, the use of Florida Virtual, attendance, those things, where the teachers...
Thank you. Mr. Dakota and then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we're going to be reviewing this response, I think that last page, I think even with a magnifying glass, I don't think I'd be able to read that sheet at all, even with a magnifying glass. So I think if you're going to have that, provide us with that curriculum calendar that it should be on an 11 by 17 or something like that, a fold-out of some kind, or either do half and half. And if somebody who's putting together these, the earlier pages knows that the chart can't be split over a page, that the heading should go with that. I think you just have to press a couple of, like, you know, return keys on that a couple of times to get it onto the right page along with the chart, so that things like on page 27, that the bottom of page 27 belongs on the top of page 28, and should, it should be included on that page, as opposed to being on the page that the teachers and paraprofessional attendance, that should be, that heading should be at the top of that page. The little things, just to make it easier to read, it was kind of confusing. It took me about five or 10 minutes, probably, kind of, well, where the heck is, you know, just a simple little thing like that. But that last page was like, I can't even, honestly, I just had my eyes checked, too, and this is just way too small, sorry.
Thank you. And Ms. Martin?
You know, I certainly agree with my colleagues in their requests. You know, I would say that, you know, I was certainly struck, as my colleague was, by, you know, 20 pages of the attendance data, week-by-week, day-by-day breakdowns. I think a little analysis is not, should not be unexpected to, for us to be able to get some interpretation of this data that would show us where there are concerns perhaps, and so that we might be able to track trends. So I think, you know, I think it's impressive that, as the superintendent says, we have access to better data than ever before in our history. That's great. But what we really need is for it to be interpreted in a way that it's actually useful data that can allow us to make better decisions. So I think as you're having your conversations with Ms. Doherty, I would just ask if that can be incorporated into the response, that we could get some context and some analysis of this straight data. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Ms. Clark?
I just, I guess, I'm going to say that I think this, as I'm looking and understanding the explanation from the team on what all of this information is, and I reflect on what the actual request was, we, the request was daily attendance rates. We literally got daily attendance rates. We got the rates that, of class sizes, although I don't think we talked through that one, so that one might still be a little bit of confusion, but I feel like the deal is, we asked for a lot of data, and that's what we got. And I have to say, I don't know what the lines of success are. You know, we've talked through in that presentation for KPIs, like, we identify, we're identifying what some of the baselines are, and then what are the areas of improvement, because we've talked about the goals that we have. I'm just, I'm confused about what my colleagues are, you know, we're midway through, you know, January, and we've been at this for a while. There's a lot of information here, and I don't know, you know, we're seeing attendance rates that are over 90% for almost every, you know, day in every school. So what, what are we asking the team here to pull out for us? I'm confused about what you all are looking for. I know that we, we all know that there's good and bad in remote learning, and we need to work to improve it, but my understanding from all the conversations we've had here, where we're seeing issues, you know, the schools themselves are doing things to improve, you know, with, working with families, whether it's IT issues, whether it's home visits. I mean, I feel like we're, we're certainly, we're asking a lot of questions, and we should ask a lot of questions, but I, as I'm looking through this request, they gave us the, they gave us the data. And maybe the ask is really, can you just point out some of the, right, the higher-level things, you know, point our attention to things that are, you know, to help us understand it? Even this conversation has helped to understand what we're looking at. But I don't, I don't really get what more you're, you're asking for, because we haven't set up, you know, we talked about, for example, the iReady tool in the KPI, I believe, and the quarter, the first quarter of this year is similar to the first quarter of last year when we were in person. So to me, I'm saying, okay, well, that's something. We're understanding data on top of data, and that's, we're in line. It'll be interesting to see what happens in the second, or the next measurement point. But I'm not, I'm not, just not sure what, what else can be done. I would, you know, if someone has a response, I'd appreciate, you know, your input.
Sure, I'll let Ms. Doherty go first, but, I mean, some of it we're asking, too, is like, the last page, you should be able to read it. Some of the other pages were 27 or 28, like, 29, not 29, but, you should be able to read these report a little bit easier, that's all. Page...
If I could, Mr. Mayor, the...
Like, page 29, I don't even know what that means. Like, maternity, what does that mean? Someone's teaching the fifth grade from maternity? I don't know what, the report should be a lot easier to read. Ms. Doherty, go ahead.
I, you know, I do want to clarify, because I think that, you know, by giving all the specific data that I wanted, I was hoping to use that, that the team would use that as evidence. What evidence do we have that we're doing this? What were the issues that we saw that we talked about? Multiple times, we talked about inconsistency of class size. I'm talking just remote, right? Multiple times, we talked about inconsistency of screen time expectations. I had been hearing from multiple parents that classes were being taught by pairs. Now, if I have a third grader, I know my third grade is only going through third grade once, hopefully, right? I want a teacher teaching, a licensed teacher, teaching my third grader. So those concerns, we talked about them on the floor, but we never got data. We never got the information that I was looking to get in what I called a comprehensive data-driven report. So those specifics about attendance were, and, so we did, by pointing out to me the, what that page 28 meant, that that was the chart of the pairs who were teaching, then I understood that chart, we were able to immediately see that there are four classes at the STEM Academy, the Rogers School, that are being taught by pairs. So that's where the data was going to help inform what I'm hearing hearsay on the street, right? So we, I remember we got reports that talked about attendance throughout the district, and maybe, and that would have been a phone call to say, what do you mean by everyday attendance? Because I think these numbers, you know, 95% attendance at the Shaughnessy, hey, that's great. 100% attendance at the Bridge Program. I just wanted the data to back it up. And there were ways that we would get attendance reports that was spread over like 11 by 17, and you'd have all the data, all the schools, and then there would be an analysis that says, you know, notice these areas where we're seeing a drop-off, you know? I mean, I don't know if anyone, if you looked at the attendance, who's got the worst attendance in the district? Who knows?
That's the 80-day school right now, they're at 24%, because unfortunately, in a remote environment, we're learning very quickly that our substantially separate schools...
Well, the Career Academy has consistently been very low as well. Those are our most troubled and vulnerable high school kids, right, at the Career Academy?
Ms. Doherty, we can answer all of those questions. If it's, if what's being asked is an analysis of data, the daily attendance rates and what you're sharing now is what we refer to as the average daily attendance over a set pan of time.
Okay, so that, again, if I wasn't saying in a way that was clear, I apologize, and a phone call would have clarified it for you. But my goal, and what I said from the beginning, was I'm looking for a comprehensive data-driven report, because we've been hearing about inconsistencies. I want to know, I want to get a sense of what you all are doing about that, because I know we are all on the same page. We want the best remote learning we can get for our kids, right? But the fact that we have, you know, and even a maternity leave, that's not a surprise. You know when you're going to go on maternity leave, give or take a few weeks, right? So we shouldn't have classes, especially, you know, your main core. It's one thing to have a para doing, I don't want to minimize any class, but your main class, you should have teachers in those positions. So that was my intention, Ms. Clark.
Sure, why don't we move this forward, and we'll go back for a review of this motion, and we'll just, you guys can talk during the week, we'll see what we need for the report.
I don't want to wait to ask for the report again. I want, I have the support to get the report. We can work together to get something that's going to not cause busy work for you guys, but give us real information. That's what I'm looking for.
All right, we'll clear it up tomorrow.
Yes, I'm thinking the February 17th KPI may answer the questions, but just one other point of clarity here. The reports are put together so you can access them electronically. The curriculum map is a reference point that is, there is a link to the curriculum map. The expectation was not that the committee is reading through the curriculum map. The question was around what structures and protocols are in place to monitor instruction. The curriculum maps, these are far more than, I mean, this is a big poster size, larger than any of these pictures hanging in my office, so I don't know the link...
But I would argue that the curriculum map, even if we could meet it, wasn't going to address what I was trying to get to about this comprehensive report on remote learning.
Okay, I welcome the call tomorrow.
So did you want to form a motion to redo it, or you're just going to talk, and we'll get the motion back, we'll get that?
Do I need a motion to say I'm just sending it back? Do you want to do that?
Yeah, because otherwise it'd be accepted for report of progress.
Okay, so I make that in the form of a motion to send it back for clarification.
Yeah, clarification by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota.
All those in favor?
No. Can I speak on it, though, Mayor? We're all done, right? Okay. It went back, she had nine chances to speak, and I can't say one thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Howey.
Well, I want to, I want to say this, okay? We tabled something from Mr. Dillon that would have talked about Florida Virtual Platform that did something very positive just for physical education through virtual learning. Number two, this system, this school system that I sat on for a while now, has done many beautiful things that get kids ready for virtual learning. Everybody here does not like virtual learning. I think, Ms. Clark, your first year here, I'm going to let you know what that is. This is micromanaging 100%.
We're not editorializing.
Okay, so I'm done, I'm done, Mayor. That's my point. Thank you very much.
It's not, all right. Next motion mine, I'm all set. Yeah, roll call on the last motion.
Clarification and data within...
Mira Leahy.
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
No.
Four yeas, two nays, one absent, motion is approved.
All right, motion to report to accept 8-1 through 8-4-6, with the exception of 8-4.5. Need a motion to accept a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. New business, permission to post early childhood coach program developer.
Thank you. The description's in the packet. Ms. Desmond, can you provide a summary for the committee? And this is the position, Mr. Mayor, that you and I spoke briefly about, and I know you had a request.
Yeah, this one I prefer if it went back and could be posted as a union position, but let's see what you have to say.
Ms. Desmond, can you give a summary? And then, Dr. Hall, can you provide a response to the mayor?
This position is a position that's funded through our Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative. It is a grant that we receive funding for. Typically, it's annual, and this is a coaching position to help support our teachers in our preschool program, and also, not only to support coaching, but also to help with program development and curriculum integration at our early childhood center and classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Hall?
Sure, Mayor, I engaged LSAA after speaking with you briefly before the meeting, and they're in agreement with this, with the request that it be changed on the last page from term of employment, not affiliated to LSAA, unionized.
Okay, thank you. Is any comments on the floor about the change? All right, so we need, where are we? We need a motion to accept it and post it. Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Howey. Roll call.
Mira Leahy?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Next, budget transfers, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. These were referenced, I referenced these with the permission to enter. These reflected procedural mechanism to ensure the funding for the permission to enters, last two permission to enters that we discussed early in the meeting.
Any questions on budget transfers? Motion to accept by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
This is for the 250.
What's that?
There's two separate ones, so one has to be for 250, and so...
Yeah, there's two, there's two transfers within the...
Yeah, there's two separate ones, yes.
But it's not you separate...
So we'll do this one for 250, and then we'll do the next one. So Ms. Martin, and who was the second one?
Mr. Dakota.
Okay. Mira Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Six yeas, approved.
And then the other budget transfer, 9,900. Any questions on that? Motion to accept by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Howey. Roll call.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
9 for diagnostic research proposal.
Thank you. Dr. Gilery, can you provide a brief summary for the committee, brief summary?
Yes, so this is, again, we use the iReady assessment. This is their ability to provide us some additional tools that may be used to further, based on how students are testing, then give teachers toolkits or additional resources to help support those students.
Questions on this? Motion to approve the program by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Communications, we have two communications, letters of appreciation by Lowell, to the Lowell Fire Department, local 853 Chief Sharon and retired firefighter Larry Finn, and then we have a thank you letter from Paul George. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Martin.
Mira Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Any other questions, updates? Motion adjourned by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you.